2016 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck. Santos.
Here.
Mayor Yveekorum.
All right, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we'll start with the first call, public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is John Lovell. So please come down and state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Lovell. I live at 1137 Fall River Circle, Longmont, Colorado. And tonight, I'm here to represent Habitat for Humanity of the St. Brain Valley. Hearing sound up there.
Can you hear?
I think it's working up there, but it's not.
Hello? Yeah, mine?
All right.
Okay.
Mayor Coombs and members of City Council, I'm here to speak in support of the affordable housing proposal before the council this evening. For 28 years, Habitat for Humanity has been building strength, stability, and self-reliance through, for our families, through homeownership. But Habitat is an advocate for all types of affordable housing, be it rental, homeownership, or transitional housing. To date, Habitat has built 70 homes in the St. Brain Valley, including 63 here in Longmont. During our time in Longmont, Habitat homeowners have paid $573,000 in property taxes, 70,000 of that in 2014. As many of you know, Habitat serves families in the 30% to 60% average median income range, families that would never be able to obtain traditional financing for any type of home. We sell those homes to our family, and they pay an affordable mortgage back to Habitat. We reinvest those funds to build more homes in our community. We have been the recipient of affordable housing funds in the form of loans that have allowed us to buy property and allowed Habitat to purchase land for development. We repay the city for those over time and use those funds immediately to build more homes. We have also been a recipient of some of the incentives that are proposed by the city's recommendations that you will hear about tonight. They have allowed us to leverage our funding and create more homes for families. Habitat currently has eight homes under construction right here in Longmont, plus one in Deacono and one in Erie. After that, we only have land for six more homes in the city. At our last homeowner orientation, to give you an idea of the scope of the problem, we had over 100 people in attendance looking to Habitat as a potential solution for their affordable housing here in Longmont. Many of our homeowners actually spend over 50% of their income prior to coming to a Habitat home for housing. So what does affordable, stable home mean to our families? Let me give you one example in closing. Faustino and Maria Rojas partnered with Habitat on our seventh home here in town in 1995. 20 years later, it's still the center of their home. They celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary there. Nine children, of their nine children, nine of them today are traditional homeowners, getting their mortgages through banks and that sort of thing. Three of their daughters, because of their excellent academic achievement through a stable home, attended CU and have become teachers in the St. Brain Valley. Two of them have their master's degrees. So one home transferred, I'm sorry, transformed the lives of nine children, 22 grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. That's the power of an affordable home. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Safi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here on the support of the $1 million budget for the affordable housing. I am a primary employer here in the city. Most of my team members are professionals, yet, and three of them with PhD degrees. So we are talking about well-educated, well, with good income. Yet, two of them have to travel to Denver or to Erie for housing. Others, on the lower income, have to go to county, to our neighboring counties. Therefore, the drive, the money that they save on housing, they spend it in transportation. So it is our duty, my duty, and your duty to help these folks, our members of the community. So my belief, and my personal belief, is that a million dollars is nothing. Now, let's go back in 2013. The Affordable Housing Committee, which I chaired, we met for a year and a half. We reported to you, at that time, that was before the flood, that the city was lacking 1,425 units. That was before the flood. Now it has increased. At that time, we asked for a million dollars for 10 years, and it would have been a revolving fund. Therefore, the city didn't have to continue doing this forever and ever. So please consider this again as a favor to all of us, members of this community. A million dollars is nothing. A few cents here, a few cents there, if we increase our income to the city, it can be done, it can be collected. At the same time, I would like to take the time to thank you for allocating $425,000 plus $100,000. So we are now halfway there. We need to go the other half. I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mary Ann, is it? Riggi? Yes. R-I-G-H-I. I did find your voicemail.
Yeah, to, okay, thank you. Oh, thanks. Oh, that's very nice of you. That relieves my legs, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. That's very kind of you. My name is Mary Ann Riggi, R-I-G-H-I. Most people want to pronounce it Riggy. It is Italian, but it's Riggi. So, thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. I'd like to speak on, oh, my address is now 70 21st Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. I'm in senior housing with the city of Longmont. So thank you, everyone who's helped me get there, everyone who's helped me get there. So I'd like to also thank the City Council and the city of Longmont for voting before to have free bus service, RTD bus service. I was actually at Raquel's earlier, and one of the servers, David, asked me to let you know that he's grateful as well, that he told me to let you know, I didn't get his last name, and maybe he didn't want me to say it anyway, but he's one of the servers at Raquel's, and he's very nice, and he said that he saved hundreds of dollars by not having to buy bus passes. So we'd like to encourage the City Council and the mayor to please vote yes again to extend the free bus service. I've used it, my children, my grown children have used it, my daughter-in-law, my grandson, and many of my friends have used it, and it's saved me money, even though I'm disabled and I get a discount because of that, I still would have to pay otherwise. And many people, many of my friends would not be able to afford to go and do the things they do already, and go to doctor's appointments, which are very important, and run errands if there were no free bus service. It's one of the, it's the only place I've ever lived in where there's free bus service, free local bus service. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank everyone also for everything they've done to help me and my family in Longmont to get housing. I can't name all the names, all my friends who've helped me move several times, and all the wonderful places where I've been. I could mention some of them, Best Western Motel, and, am I allowed to? I already did. The Super 8 and the Longmont region is a very good place. And also, Aspen Meadows, where I'm living now, I'm very happy with all the people that have helped me. And my children, my grown children, I can't even mention all the help they've gotten in Boulder County and in Longmont for all the things they've done to do well in Boulder County as well, you know, the city of Boulder as well. I'd like to thank so many people over there. That's about it. I just wanted to thank everybody. So, thank you again so much. Thank you, thank you. Have a wonderful evening, and what I say is God bless. So whoever your, whatever your higher power is, may they shine on you and keep the City Council going, because you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Sandy Stewart?
Mayor Coombs and City Council members, I am currently an advisory board member for the Boulder County 10-Year Plan to End Homelessness, and I was also a member of the Longmont Workforce Housing Task Force, which met monthly starting in November of 2011, and completed our work and made a presentation to the City Council in May of 2013. At that time, we were in need of 1,449 housing units. We asked for a plan to provide 50 affordable rental housing units a year and $1 million per year placed in Affordable Housing Fund for 10 years. Since then, we have waited for the City Council to act, and I realize that it's September 2013, the flood caused us all to stop and shift gears. But then, as now, we still need affordable housing. The need has only grown. Further study is done by the Outside Consultant Group Economic Planning Systems, which City Council directed to provide information on affordability targets and recommendations. EPS has done that, and now they have provided you, City Council, with a toolkit of options. I ask you to act on their recommendations. I would like to see 10% of the rental units to be built in the future to be affordable, and that you consider the option to provide a dedicated funding source to our local Affordable Housing Fund of $1 million or more annually. This Affordable Housing Force is greatly needed in Longmont. It will also help the Boulder County-wide plan for more affordable housing throughout Boulder County. Longmont does not operate in a vacuum. Whatever affects one of our workforce families affects all countywide indirectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott McClary?
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Scott McClary, I'm with Boulder County, representing the Transportation Department. So I want to discuss the Ride Free Longmont program. As you know, Boulder County's been a proud, a proud partner with you guys over the last two years. One concept that's come up, discussed at your Transportation Advisory Board, and it's come up before that too, is maybe charging a dollar or some small nominal fee for every boarding rather than making it completely free. And then maybe the city would cover the, you know, the delta of that to the full fare price. Or even better, have RTD just change the fare to a dollar. And I think that those deserve some real consideration, and Boulder County will be proud to have those discussions with you. The problem right now is that there's no way that's going to happen this year. It's taken many months of working with RTD just to get to the contract that we have in front of us now. They are not a nimble organization, as I'm sure you know, but more importantly, any change in the fare would require a fair equity analysis. This is required by the Federal Transit Administration, and they would want to know why would Longmont receive a different fare than the rest of the district. That's going to take many months to do that, consulting, and so there's just not time for that. Moreover, RTD is actually keeping the costs of the program at the pre-program cost. So they looked at how much fare box revenue was generated before the program started, and that's the basis for what the cost of the program is. It's only 8% more, the current contract is only 8% more than what we were paying before. Now, ridership has tripled. The latest numbers have tripled. So if you actually were to switch to a pre-boarding type of payment, somewhat ironically, the city would be paying RTD more than what it does under the current proposal. So it's funky, but that's how it is. We see about a half a million annual boardings on the local buses now, so even if RTD only got a dollar, it'd be much more revenue than what RTD gets from Longmont today. So, you know, one item that is on your agenda tonight is the Affordable Housing Incentive Program. You've already heard about that tonight, and, you know, you've taken great strides to address this. In the Transportation Department, we've been thinking about not just affordable housing, but affordable living. So if you take Longmont residents collectively, they spend 24% of their income on housing. Transportation, 19%. So it's right behind it. It's not the leading cost from a family's budgets, but it's the second one, it's right there. So I think the Ride Free Longmont program means, you know, if you can shift what the transit patrons are paying to the taxpayers, that's essentially what the Ride Free program does. It increases affordable living, access to jobs, access to schools. All these reduce your long-term human service costs and can even open up some family budgets for other housing. It's a package. Transportation and housing needs to be thought of together. So again, I think a deeper, a deeper conversation about the continuation of the program is warranted with RTD and so forth, but we need, we need time to have those conversations, and so I urge you next Tuesday to support the continuation to the, to the end of the year. So thank you for the opportunity. We'll see you next week.
Thank you. Mary Lynn?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here with a group of residents primarily.
What's your address, please?
I'm sorry? 744 Atwood. I'm here with a contingent of residents from, I believe, across the city. Many of us are from the east side, to speak about the ongoing concerns with train noise. In all of the many meetings that I have attended with this very active and passionate group of citizens, we have observed that all of the issues related to train noise can be divided into two categories. One of them is probably the first and foremost, most important, is quality of life. There are many health issues related to the train noise, which you'll be hearing about from the folks who are here tonight. And the second is economic development. Now, if there are two charges that we, in the city of Longmont, expect our City Council to act on in our behalf, it is to increase the quality of life and to act on our behalf to make sure that our city can reach the economic development potential that we have. Our neighbors, all up and down the front range, understand that addressing train issues, especially train noise, is very important to economic development. They have plans to do all kinds of things in order to deal with this issue. I believe that they are working on moving the trains. I do believe that they, some of them have installed quiet zones and are planning in that direction for more. It's time that we follow the example of our neighbors and deal with this issue in a way that will help us to build a vital downtown and give our citizens the healthy and quiet neighborhood experience that we moved here hoping that we would have. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Jacoby?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rick Jacoby. I live at 419 Collier Street, and I'm here to talk about the train noise as well. Two weeks ago, I didn't see it in the local paper, but the city of Loveland committed $1.5 million over the next three years in their budget to fund 20 quiet zone crossings in their city. This is to be combined with a $6 million federal grant they're applying for to get this done. Now, I don't think Loveland is a better city than Longmont, nor do they have deeper pockets than we do. I hope they aren't more visionary than we are. Lucky for us, while Loveland has more crossings to deal with, this much funding would meet all of Longmont's needs. Windsor, Commerce City, Fort Morgan, and Winter Park have quiet zones. Windsor and Arvada are getting more this year. We can get relief from the trains too, with your help. I know there's a presentation updated tonight on the quiet zones for you, and please note in the presentation that grant sources are more plentiful now to help pay for this. Some of these are very well-funded, in the hundreds of millions of dollars. The FAST Act alone has $225 million in 2016 alone expressly just for railroad-grade crossings. Okay? So there's a lot of money out there if we are willing to reach for it. Meanwhile, quiet zones continue to get more expensive to implement while the trains are projected to get more frequent, so it's time to stop kicking the can down the road. Last week, the Longmont Transportation Advisory Board recommended that our city start funding quiet zones in the next fiscal year. Citizens came before you last fall requesting this as well in October, and the city's own survey years ago showed that while only a fraction of people live near the tracks, a majority of Longmont residents see train noise as a problem. When you listen to the presentation tonight, please consider the wishes of your constituents and the recommendations of your own Transportation Advisory Board, and start funding quiet zones in the upcoming budget. Thank you.
Michelle Mabey?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Michelle Mabey. I live at 543 Baker Street. I want to, first of all, thank you for last October directing staff to have this study conducted that you're going to hear tonight. Lots and lots of citizens showed up, record crowds showed up at our Transportation Advisory Board last week, and it was fascinating. One of the things that stood out most to me was at 252 times a day, the train horn sound in Longmont. So quiet zones is really what we care most about right now. It's been, the study is so inclusive, it tells how long it would take to establish them, how much it's going to cost, and we're just here to try to, hope that you guys will really think seriously about moving it from the unfunded to the funded column in the CIP. Thanks.
And I guess that's the last person that's signed up. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Public invited to be heard? Okay, that ends public invited to be heard.
Mayor, you have no special reports or presentations, so the first item is a final update and presentation of Affordable Housing Incentive Plan, and Kathy Fedler is here to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, Housing and Community Investment Manager for the city of Longmont. As you know, we've presented to you several times over the past year, getting direction and feedback, narrowing focus, and refining our affordable housing program. We've looked at mandates for production of affordable housing, existing city policies and tools, revenue generating options, and incentives for production of affordable housing. These last two items or areas are what we're going to look at more closely tonight. As included in your council communication, I wanted to point out just a few of the things that council's already provided guidance and direction on that we have been moving forward with. So you've provided direction to make our affordable housing policy an incentive-based program. We have done some further exploration of the local construction defects legislation, which is still being researched. You've provided guidance to include the preservation of affordable housing, existing affordable housing in our programs and policies, and we've moved forward with that. Set a goal to create 50 to 100 units of affordable housing annually, and attempting to dedicate a million annually in funding to the Affordable Housing Fund. As part of that, as some of the speakers mentioned tonight, you have approved $425,000 annually be transferred from the general fund to the Affordable Housing Fund, starting this year, which is about 42.5% of the revenue generating goal that we had set. Excuse me. You've eliminated several revenue generation options, which has helped to narrow our research focus. In, for 2016, you approved using all of the CDBG budget for affordable housing programs and projects. The Housing and Human Services Advisory Board contributed a one-time transfer in 2016 of $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund. And through the direction of these particular items, we will create 77 new affordable rental units with the 2016 sources of funding. We've ensured that the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan or Envision Longmont includes a strong focus on affordable housing, and we've been doing some ongoing work on regional affordable housing strategies with Boulder County, city of Boulder, and our three housing authorities. So as I mentioned before, tonight's presentation is going to focus on potential incentive tools, what they are, how they impact some different types of projects, the value of the incentives, and what the city will gain in a recommended incentive program, and potential revenue sources. Again, what they are, what level they would need to be set at to generate about $500,000 annually, and impacts to the community for each resource option. I do want to remind you that the incentive program and options that we are presenting tonight are targeted specifically to encourage the private sector, market rate, housing developers and builders, to include affordable housing units, whether they're for sale or for rent, in their developments. Therefore, the prototypes that are set up to show the incentives and subsidy needed to make 10% of the total units affordable at 50% of the area median income for rentals and 80% of the area median income for sale homes. One of the tables also looks at the incentives or subsidies that would be needed to provide 20% of the units as affordable. It's not anticipated that we'll be able to incentivize or entice private sector developers to do much more than the 10% because of the difficulty in closing the financial gap and keeping them whole. While these incentives are focused on encouraging the private sector to include affordable housing, they're also available to and would support nonprofit affordable housing developments. They should allow affordable housing developers to be able to provide more affordable housing in their development, or possibly provide that housing at slightly lower area median incomes. However, knowing that these incentives can bring 10% of market housing to 50% AMI, deeper subsidy is needed to provide units at 30% or 40% AMI to make a project 100% affordable, or to make a project 100% affordable. In addition to covering the impact fee offsets, if these fees aren't approved to be waived, the Affordable Housing Fund is needed to provide these deeper subsidies. And then I'm going to pull up, I hope this is mine. Maybe? Well, you have a slide at your... Well, you have a slide at your desk that shows the for-rent housing gap. So I really wanted to just remind you, and a couple of the folks have alluded to this as well, that the updated housing needs assessment that EPS provided to us back about a year ago showed that just under 2,500 rental units were needed to be affordable at 30% of the area median income. There also was a gap at 81% to 100% of the area median income and at over 100% of the area median income for for-rent. While we've made significant progress in providing rental units at the 80% and over need areas with 1,296 units built or approved or under review, we have provided, we've approved or have under construction, a total of about 252 affordable units. 62 of those units are affordable at 30% AMI, 99% between 31% and 40%, 91% between 41% and 50% AMI, again, for a total of about 252 affordable units. Even with these additional units, our rents are continuing to increase. And if you flip over the rent housing gap on the other side, it shows what the rents have, how the rents have increased from first quarter of 2009 to the last quarter of 2015. There's been a 52.78% increase, thank you, yeah, here we go, increase in rents from 2009, which is about 8.8% annual increase over the period. We will also be losing about 73 units that are affordable at or below 50% of the area median income in the next four years unless we're able to use the Affordable Housing Fund to continue to subsidize and preserve some of these units. So the need to dedicate up to a million total into the Affordable Housing Fund each year is still needed above and beyond the incentives being offered in this package if it's approved, if we're going to be able to address the needs of our lower-income residents and our significant shortage in rental housing in the 30% and 40% area median income area. So Economic Planning Systems is going to go through the memo that was included in your packet and present some of their funding recommendations, and then I'll come back up and ask council and we'll, to get some final guidance on individual sets of recommendations and items, try and walk through it, so.
Just Councilmember Bagley?
Can I just ask one question that dawned on me? So can you, so you already explained that like on the 0% to 30% AMI level, that we have a deficit of 2,496 units, right? And you explained to me before the meeting that people were, that means that people could be driving in, they're homeless, they're doubling up with people. But I get that, but then below, the 31% to 51%, the 51% to 60%, there's a 2,708 surplus and 2,135 surplus. If vacancy in Longmont is like 1%, 1.5%, what does that mean?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what it means is that because of the deficit at the higher income levels, higher income folks are down in units that are affordable at, to people at lower incomes, so they're taking up those units. So even though it's showing a surplus in some of those other categories, in effect, there probably is not that surplus. There is, if you're just looking at the incomes and the renter households that are in those categories and the units available, but when you consider the people that are in higher incomes that are living somewhere, it's pushing down. Is that correct?
Got it. So and they're pushing out, because they have more money, they're pushing out the lower-tiered. Got it. Thank you. Now I'm going to be able to pay attention because I would have just been wondering about that. Thank you.
That's a good question. So, all right. Well, thank you, Kathy. I'm Andrew, Mayor and Council's members of council. We are with Economic and Planning Systems, Andrew Knudsen and Matt Prosser, and we're here working on the comprehensive plan, as well as specifically tonight, the housing analysis. Economic and Planning Systems is retained with many communities across the country today on housing. It's interesting because more and more communities are trying to address this issue, and the communities are asking for relief in communities as diverse as Dallas, Portland, Nashville, Reno, Park City. Those are just some of our active projects right now where we are addressing housing for, in these communities. So it runs the gamut. I think that what people are addressing is the disconnect between wage growth, income growth, and housing cost increases. So that's the reality that all of us are dealing with, and the challenge is what is the best tools calibrated for a given community to adopt to address them? And that's what we have seen our role to be, is to figure out right here in Longmont what works best. On the, this slide, what this shows is the scope of housing work. This is all of the tasks that we have been retained to do, including a review of previous work, studying the regional issues, updating the housing needs analysis, looking at best practices nationally, and then figuring out the recommendation that works here. From our last meeting, what we heard is that council is interested in housing and most interested in housing tools that are incentives for the private sector, that the incentive approach will work most effectively here, and the challenge then became for EPS to figure out what incentives do work. Ultimately, there's a combination of policy and financial, direct financial contributions, and we're going to end on ways to increase the financial resources, but the majority of the work has been focused on policy and what policy changes can be made that ultimately can be used by developers to monetize the policy, close the financial gap, and bring the pro forma into the black. To answer this question, we have, if you just go back real quick, we have completed, and the bullets right here, developer outreach. We've talked to local developers doing projects here in Longmont to get the understanding from their perspective of what works, what doesn't work, what's going on in the market. We've built a pro forma, and we've got some results from that today. We've got, we've identified tools and strategies, and ultimately, this will get wrapped up into the comprehensive plan, and that's part of the goal by design, is to do it simultaneously and ultimately get a comp plan that accounts for it. Our general parameters, targets and thresholds, we understand from the council retreat that the goal is to have 10% of the community, 10% of all housing affordable to local households. In terms of the specifics, rental thresholds, we're looking at a target at below 50% of AMI with projects that fulfill, that tap into incentives being restricted for a 30-year period. This is slightly more in response, than it has been in the past, up 10 years from the 20-year covenant before, in response to that pressure on the rental inventory that's been particularly acute. On the for-sale thresholds, targeting income levels at 60% and 80% of AMI with a covenant that lasts 10 years, which is similar to what has been true in the past. The incentive programs are ultimately targeted at developers with the goal of incorporating 10%, in some cases up to 20% of units in a given project to be affordable, which is a particularly good balance. When you talk to housing practitioners that have been doing this over time, for example, our client Denver Housing Authority, they think, I mean, that ultimately mixed income, particularly at the 10% and 20% level, ultimately increases the quality of the project, the quality of lives for residents, and is a particularly good way to incorporate affordable units throughout projects and the community as a whole. In terms of the specific tasks of what we did, what we looked at, here's a list of incentives that we considered. About half are included with specific recommendations that, in terms of how to make them work, and half were not recommended for a variety of reasons, and you can see them here: fees, density, height, property tax, fee delays, parking reductions, reduced development standards, and expedited development review. So with me tonight is my colleague, Matt Prosser, who actually constructed the pro forma based on some prototypes that you can see on the screen there, and he'll take it from here.
So based on your direction from last council meeting, we created that shortlist of incentives that was on the previous slide, and we built a financial pro forma model for three different project types to understand what the impact of one, including a certain portion of units as affordable within it, what would be the impact on the pro forma then? And then we measured how incentives or potential incentives would address the issues or the gaps created by providing affordable housing units. So to do this, we wanted to test it over a variety of project types, and so we developed three prototypes that are based pretty closely on recent development, recent, similar projects within Longmont. So one being a garden-style apartment, as you can see on the left there, the middle being an urban apartment, so sort of, you know, a more urban take on multifamily, and then lastly, a for-sale townhome project. And so we measured across these three prototypes, one, what, figured out what feasible development pro forma would be, and then measured the impact of including affordable units within those. So our approach was, again, to develop the pro forma for each of these projects, identify the value of lost revenue due to providing affordable units. So we measured what would happen to the developer's return if they had to provide 10% of units as affordable at the thresholds that we mentioned previously, and then we estimated, we did that by valuing the return of the project with affordable units and without, and the difference was what we're calling the gap. And so our goal is to try to use the incentive approach to close this gap. And within our modeling, closing the gap meant that the difference between revenues before affordable units and revenues after affordable units was within 1% of total project cost. So if we were able to get within 1% of the total project cost, we felt that was making the development break even.
If I can just interject, one of the key goals is to, as stewards of public revenue and public resources, how do you give enough dollars to a developer to make it happen without giving too much? So plus or minus 1%, we thought that that answered that, met that test.
And then ultimately, we modeled what the impact of the incentives were on developer, but also on the city, to understand what it would mean in terms of financial loss to the city if you use these incentives. So we'll get into that now. So the first, I'm going to go through all the different incentives that we analyzed and focus mainly on the ones that we feel are, we're recommending should be used by the city. And so the first was fee waivers and offsets. So you currently have a program to provide fee waivers and offsets for the inclusion of affordable units, and it's, it's based on, the amount of fees waived currently are based on several different factors, but mainly varying levels of affordability and varying levels of affordable units within a project. And it's a somewhat complicated math problem you have to go through to figure out the level of subsidy that you're going to get. And so as you'll see later, we have recommendations on trying to simplify that. So currently, on the table on the right shows all the fees eligible to be waived per your current code. You have fees that are currently eligible to be offset, meaning that we have, you have to repay these funds, or these development fees really, with affordable housing funds. And lastly, there are, there's fees at the bottom that are not eligible to be waived. And so we modeled what the value of these, these different fees were and incorporated them into our model to understand what the impact of different fee waivers and offsets would be. We also looked at the idea of density and height bonus, and as Andrew mentioned, doing this during the development of your comprehensive plan was really great because it allowed us the opportunity to gauge our stakeholders and our community on where they would want additional density or height within their community and where these incentives would make sense from a development perspective, but also from the community's perspective. And so the areas that we think would work well for density and height bonuses align directly with what we found within the Envision Longmont Outreach Process and what we're recommend, what's recommended ultimately in the Envision Longmont Plan. So for density bonus areas, these were the areas that we felt were ripe for density bonuses, where they made sense in terms of the type of developments that would be within, the value that would be created using a density bonus, and where increases in density, and then we're talking sort of moderate, 20% increases of density, would still fit within the character. And so mainly, these are the four land use categories that they would fall under. We also identified areas where height bonuses would be, would fit well within the community based on the feedback that we gained. And so these are the land use designations, the land use categories that we feel additional height is available, and we're proposing about two stories, additional two stories above the average or sort of the maximum currently in those areas, and you can see these on the map.
As we talked about this, the, one of the questions came up, you know, in addition to thinking about it through the lens of affordable housing, from a comprehensive plan perspective, where do you want density? And where do you want the core, the community, to be most focused? And particularly, that seemed to be very relevant in terms of this slide and where we wanted to concentrate the activity in redevelopment in the city.
One of the major findings of our analysis and Clarion Associates' analysis doing the comp plan was that the city is reaching its boundary and its amount of green-filled or undeveloped land, and in the future, over the next 20, 30 years, it's really going to shift to more of an infill focus. And so a lot of what the Envision Longmont Plan was about, where areas the community is comfortable with increases of height and density that will maintain the character of the community. And so we tried to align these incentives, both the density and bonus, with these areas, being cognizant of the sensitive issues related to height or density in certain areas. So we built our model, and we started measuring what the impact would be of providing 10% of affordable units. And what did we find? We found, first, we started with fee waivers and reductions. We see that as the most valuable tool to the developer as it directly impacts their bottom line, and there's a direct correlation between the incentive that's being provided and their return, whereas things like height bonus or density bonus and other things we're going to discuss in a minute don't have that direct correlation necessarily. So first, we measured what the impact would be if you provided 10% of units as affordable using a fee waiver, and we found that if you reduce fees, and this is for a for-rental project, if you reduce fees by 60%, it offset the loss that the developer would have by providing the affordable units. On the for-sale side, a 15% reduction was needed to offset lost revenue. If we added in a height or density bonus of 20% or two stories, the reduction, a fee reduction of 30% was needed for rental units, and no reduction were needed for for-sale units. We next measured what the impact of providing 20% affordable units were, and this is where we had a lot harder time trying to close the gap. Providing 10% of units and then using incentives to backfill the loss to the developer was a fairly achievable goal using a variety of different incentives, but once we get to 20% of units, it really gets difficult, and you have to start to combine these tools together to really, to even try to address the gap that's created. And so we found that waiving all fees does not affect, or does not offset lost revenue for rental projects. So even if you waived all development fees, it still doesn't cover the gap created by providing 20% affordable units. So a combination of density and height bonus plus 50% reduction of fees would offset the revenue for rental projects. Now, for for-sale projects at 80% of AMI, that really what drives this gap is the difference between what the market rate is and what the affordable maximum is. And for rental projects right now, at the AMI levels that we're targeting, there's a pretty sizable gap. Now, on the for-sale side, that gap is a lot less, and so you need less incentive to make for-sale projects whole again, if you will. And so if you're providing 20% of units in a for-sale project, 30% of the fees reduced would cover the gap, or providing a height or density bonus. We also looked at the idea of property tax abatement or rebate. So this would be the concept of taking the city's portion and either abating it by not charging it or rebating it to the developer for a 10-year period as a way to incent them to build affordable units. And we found this, this has advantages to the city as it reduces the amount of revenue upfront that they have to forego and spreads it over a 10-year period, but it's not as valuable to a developer because it's not upfront and directly impacting their bottom line as they're trying to get financing. And so we found it to have benefits similar to the fee waiver, but it was not as attractive. And so we think it's a useful tool for the city to consider, and maybe something to consider if you're really trying to target really low-income household developments, so 30% of AMI and below, that type of household, and you still need additional funds to help incent projects. But it wasn't something we recommended to be the main component of your incentive program related to getting related to getting private developers to build housing. But it's something to consider and potentially use in the future. And then we evaluated four other tools, and we vetted them with the developers we spoke with and tried to model them the best we could. And the first one was the idea of a fee delay. So delaying development fees from building permit issue to when they get a certificate of occupancy. And we found that that does add some value to developers and could be an incentive. But you, as a community, has tried to implement a similar program in the past and have found very difficult to administer this fee delay. And so the benefits it creates may not outweigh the headaches it causes for you to try to use as an incentive. So we're not recommending that be used. Next, we looked at parking reductions. You currently provide reductions for affordable and age-restricted units, and we think this is great. We had a difficult time trying to develop a program that would use parking reduction that we thought would work for developers and also work for neighbors and the city in allowing enough parking but not creating parking issues for adjoining neighborhoods. So what we suggest is to continue your approach of providing reductions for affordable and age-restricted units, which is, I think, a reduction down to one space per unit currently, but not including it more into the incentive program or increasing the reduction anymore. We also considered the idea of reduced development standards. This is also something we think adds value, but was very difficult to try to create into sort of a simplistic, easy-to-follow program because reductions in development standards are very project-specific, and you would have to almost try to apply them on a case-by-case basis. And so we think there's, it's worth further consideration and discussion among your staff team to figure out if there's a way to develop some sort of incentive for reduced standards. But we weren't able to get to one yet. And so it has value, but it's not defined yet, and I think it needs further discussion. And lastly, is expedited review process. We have a difficulty of finding how this adds value to developers. I mean, having a stable, consistent, quick process for developers is definitely valuable, but it's hard for you as a community to gauge, you know, are we actually providing any expedited review for these affordable projects if we're really trying to provide expedited review for every project? And so it was difficult, one, to monetize the value of this program, and, two, difficult to see how it's necessarily something you want to try to enforce. And so we didn't recommend it as a program. So our incentive strategy recommendations, after we've went through all those incentives, we're going to walk through the program that we've developed as your incentive strategy. It can get somewhat complex, as you've already kind of guessed based on what we presented. And so we'll walk through it slowly and at the level of detail we think is correct. But if you have more questions, please ask. So our recommendations are, first, you need to simplify the current program. I mentioned that you have an incentive program currently that uses fee waivers and offsets to incent affordable units to be built. But it's a fairly complicated process in terms of you have to fill out a form that estimates different, you know, the different value of your offset, and then you have to go seek approvals of those offsets. And so it's a program that hasn't been taken to from the private development world because of its complex nature and the amount of additional review it may create. And so one of our other recommendations is identifying opportunities to make affordable housing a permitted or limited use where appropriate, which would trigger administrative review. And so that using an incentive to provide affordable housing doesn't trigger additional planning commission meetings or city council meetings just to get the incentive, which adds a delay to a developer's project, but also increased scrutiny, which may derail the use of the incentive and actually discourage them to use it. And so this is the language that staff was suggesting in terms of how do we approach that. I mean, ultimately, the goal would be to allow for the incentive to be sort of by rights. So if you come in with a project that fits zoning and you want to provide affordable housing, then you get the incentive, you know? It's just the check of a box, not necessarily something that needs to be approved every time. Other recommendations, focusing on incenting private developers to participate, focusing on programs to create your rental units at 50% of AMI and for-sale units from 60% to 80% of AMI. And then lastly, promote the program. Go out and market it. Have housing staff sit in on development proposals with the planning staff and making sure that developers are aware of the program and really, hopefully, how easy it is to use. And that way, developers in the community know, and then new developers coming in, that they have the potential to use things as incentives and address this affordable housing need within the community.
Councilman Bagley, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm just jumping in because it has to do with this. So bullet point number three, focus on incentive programs, or focus on incentive programs on creating rental units at 50% of AMI. Why is that your recommendation when looking at the for-housing gap? Just help me understand. 31% to 51% of AMI, there's 2,708 units surplus, and then 51% to 60%, there's 2,135 units surplus. That recommendation is telling us, do an incentive program to focus on building more of literally what is smack dab in the middle of what you're telling us is too much?
Yeah, and I think unfortunately, that gap analysis sort of misleads you. And we were talking about it just, you know, at the beginning of the conversation, is the lack of overall affordable housing units, or not, sorry, rental housing in the community, especially for, you know, middle-income folks, is putting pressure on the lower-income levels. And so what you're seeing there is a lot of units that are rented sort of at a certain price point because the majority of your rental stock is sort of at the same quality and vintage. And so it's theoretically affordable to those 50%, 30% to 50% of AMI levels, but in reality, most of them are probably being rented also by folks that can afford more. And then you also, and I think it's a pretty alarming chart that Kathy presented, and we've seen it elsewhere in the metro area, but it seems, in Boulder County, it seems to be really alarming. But I think it's like over 50% increase in rents in the last five years, 8% annual, or almost 9% annual growth. And so I think those numbers, which are based on, you know, 2013 census data, are not necessarily reflecting what's happening over the last year and a half or two in terms of accelerating rents. And I think there's just a growing need. And then lastly, and Andrew will have more, in terms of incentive program, it would be very hard-pressed for us to develop a program that would get private developers to be able to provide those 30% affordable units. They're very tough, and they're usually requiring the layering of all sorts of different funding sources from state to federal sources. And so trying to address what we can, we think is a growing need at that 30, 50% range with a program that can use the private development world is where we think there's the most value. And that'll ultimately help reduce pressure on those, you know, sort of in the 30 to 40 range of AMI households.
So, okay, I get that. So but I guess, again, I'm asking the question because I don't know, so I'm asking to understand. So if 30% AMI and below is hard to really incent, and by the way, good job on using that word correctly, incent, rather than incentivize, yeah, it's become a word, but anyway. But anyway, 0% to 30% is hard to incent people, private developers, to actually participate. Why aren't we, what would happen if we actually, you know, gave an incentive to private developers to actually build 80 and up percent of AMI? I mean, I guess, maybe I'm stupid, but it just seems that if we actually got 80% and over of AMI, you have 2,501 units. If you add 81 to 100 plus 101% and up, that's 2,501 units. Theoretically, if we had high-end apartments and got those people out of the 30 to 60% range, that is your 2,496. Why aren't we doing that?
So, Councilmember Bagley and Mayor Coombs in council. So there isn't a need to incent folks at that level. And in fact, that's what the market is providing now. So when I made my introductory comments, almost 1,300 units are already under construction, in process, under review, at those higher AMI levels. So the market is taking care of that. So there isn't a need to incent those units, at least at this point in time. Things could change, but at this point in time, there is not. And on the lower-income level units, by having these incentives that we're recommending for the private sector at 50%, also available to the nonprofit developers and the folks who, that's their niche, is the lower income, it adds value to their projects and allows them to do 30 and 40% units and maybe more 30 and 40% units than they would otherwise be able to do. So it does kind of hit both areas. Further subsidies needed, and again, that's why we really need additional funding into that affordable housing fund in the form of loans or grants to the housing authority or to Habitat to help them get to those very low-income units.
I'd also add, all of those new units that Kathy mentioned, the 1,700, I think was the number we quoted, those are all not affordable at 50% of AMI. They are at the 80 or above.
That's what I'm saying. But you would, again, just looking at the gap analysis, if you, so if you just, let's just use the 1,300 number. So 2,496 units are deficient for the 0% to 30%, right? So let's just assume you build those 1,300 units, which free up 1,300 units, and everybody kind of moves up.
That, in theory, that would work, other than your community is growing pretty quickly.
I get that.
And so the new units are actually probably being taken up by people moving to the community. And so unfortunately, it's not as, and that's a little bit, a misleading thing about gap analysis, is it's not a zero-sum game because you're continually, most communities have affordable housing problems are growing, and they're going quickly.
Even if we did, let's just assume that none of them, let's just assume 1,300 units are built and it doesn't alleviate the 2,496. If we gave everybody $400, that's $998,000. So, and I'm giving that $400 bucks, if you go from the 0% to 30% to the 31% to 51%, so giving them a $400 voucher with a million dollars every year that we're talking about coming up with, isn't that an easier solution than worrying about all this stuff?
It depends on if you want to attack the problem from a supply perspective or a demand perspective.
Right.
So if you attack it from a supply perspective, you will increase the supply that will ultimately be an asset to the community in perpetuity.
That's what I was thinking, except for the fact that the comment he just made, Matt, is it? Yeah, Matt just made was that, you know, the gap analysis is, you can't really trust it, it's tricky, or whatever the words were, because people move in and suck up the vacuum. It's not necessarily that people are moving up, people move in. The reason I'm asking is, I'm just making, here's the overall thought going in the back of my mind, I just want to make sure whatever solution we come up with is not unnecessary work. Yeah, it's the only reason I'm asking the questions.
Sure. So, great question, because ultimately, what is simplest often works best. And we're always trying to pursue that and balance all these various goals with ultimately bottom line, what is simple. And ultimately, I mean, we've got a client right now where that is one of the options that they're looking at is stipends, happens to be CDOT, and they're hard to work, hard to place locations, Summit County, Eagle County, and Pittkin County. And for employers, it's, who are very discreet, have discreet housing needs, it may be the best solution. For cities, ultimately, if you're giving stipends, it fuels demand with a limited supply.
Right.
Exasperating the problem.
You've answered all my questions. Thanks.
Great.
So.
Just keep in mind on the next couple of slides, we have tried to keep things simple. Oh, no, no, oh, yeah. Good.
So I wanted to walk through the approach of the incentive program or what we're suggesting or recommending to illustrate how it works. Now, we're going to try to move through this at a decent pace and not get bogged down on the details. But if you have questions, feel free, stop me, because we're not trying to, not necessarily provide you all the details, we just don't want to be here, make you be here for three hours trying to walk through the discussions that we had in office. So we think that the first tool offered to developers should be a fee waiver. And we're recommending that you consider not offsetting a portion of your fees. And really, what we found in our analysis was, you would be spending most of the money that you dedicated to affordable housing through your general fund set aside on offsetting the water and sewer development fees if you were providing the waiver. And so those funds can be used to attack those harder, to fund units and, you know, affordable housing that needs other components like social services to provide. And so we wanted to sort of free that up. And so that's one consideration for you, is those fees that you do currently offset, which are the water and sewers system development fees, those could also just be permanently waived. And I think it would require a change to the development language in your ordinance, but it is not a huge change that needs to be made. But anyway, so the first approach is providing a fee waiver. So that's the option, one is fee-only. Now, a second option is what we're calling a packet option, package option. And that would be for a couple of different reasons. One would be if a developer felt that a height and density bonus was actually pretty valuable and would like to use those as well, we developed recommendations on the amount of waivers plus height bonus that could be provided if a developer wanted that. And then second, as I already showed, if you tried to provide 20% of units at the thresholds we provide, or tried to target even lower thresholds for AMI, there really starts to become a major gap between what developer would have in return and what would happen if they provided affordable units. And so the package option allows you more flexibility to provide an incentive in terms of the fee waiver, but also height and density bonuses to try to address those gaps. And so I wanted to walk you through what this looks like for, sort of a decision tree for providing 10% of units at 50% of AMI. And so a developer has an option to come in if he wants to provide these units, 10% of units at 50% of AMI. He can choose either the waiver option or the packet option, the package option. If he uses the waiver option, 60% of fees would be waived, and that would be the incentive. Now, if he wants to use the package option, he can get either a density increase of 20% or a height increase in 20%, or two floors, depending on where the project was located. So the project has to be located in a land use category and ultimately, a zoning category that you, as a council and as a community, are okay with a density bonus or height bonus being offered. And so you have to be in that area to get a certain height or density bonus. And then on top of that, you would also get 30% of fees waived. And so those coupled together would help address the gaps, but use it in a variety of fees. And that's almost, is a benefit to you as a community, is if you're waiving less fees, that's less impact on your development, community investment fees and all the different revenue you create by providing a density or a height bonus which doesn't have a monetary value for the city, but may have some impacts on the city. And so we show at the bottom just the land use consideration, the designations that would fit for density or height bonus.
We have a decision tree like this for every option. Rental, ownership, 10% affordable, 20% affordable. We're only planning to walk through this one. The rest are at the end of the slideshow, and we can certainly go there if there's questions. Bottom line, there's options. 100% waiver or a combination of floor area with less waiver. And how we adjust the amount of fee based on the additional floor area is what these decision trees show.
So the next few slides walk through what the specific parameters, oops, the specific parameters would be for each percent of units provided in different AMI levels. And so, like I said, fee waiver is the primary tool that we're suggesting be used, and we're waiving all, suggesting that you waive all eligible fees and do not backfill the fees with the affordable housing fund like you do currently. So for rental projects at 50% of AMI, 60% waiver for 10% of units, and 100% waiver for 20% of units. Getting lost in the slides. For for-sale projects, the waiver is a lot less. So 15% waiver if you provide 10% of units, 30% waiver if you provide 20% of units, at 80% of AMI, the fee waiver increases at a lower AMI level at 60% of AMI, it's up to 40 for 10% units and 80% for 20 units affordable. Now, all of this is documented in the memo that you received. Now, all of this is documented in the memo that you received, in great detail and length, including the modeling of the impact of both the incentive on developer, but also the city. And so, it's a resource there for you to look at, and we also can answer questions, but we're going to keep moving on. So, again, the package option, this is the combination of fee waivers and height and density bonus. And again, I mentioned this, but it's worth reiterating, we tailored the height and density bonus areas to what we found in Envision Longmont would make sense. And ultimately, and this is a key point, we align this with the land use categories that are within your future land use plant, map within Envision Longmont. Ultimately, what will drive these are zoning maximums that are within your land development code. And so, you're about to embark on updating your land development code based on what Envision Longmont said. And so, by providing this incentive program now, and the guidance we have, it'll help the folks, the staff, and the consultants who are doing the rewrite of the land development code, it'll give them the guidance they need to weigh how, what, how the incentive program would work with the, the different maximums that are in your current land use zoning, or your current zoning categories, and what changes might have been recommended based on the land use categories developed in Envision Longmont. So, in terms of density and height bonus, it's a 20% increase over the zoning maximum, that's the incentive that we're suggesting be provided. In terms of height bonus, it's two to three additional stories, stories over the zoning maximum. And, the, the number of stories depends on the land use designation that you are within, and that's provided with, in a summary table that we have at the end of this presentation, if we want to look at it, it's in your memo to review. And we, we do recognize that there are certain things you might want to allow additional height for, that aren't just affordable housing, perhaps, vertical mixed use that includes Class A office space, or development around transit stations. And so, we understand that those areas may also allow for height, additional height based, as opposed to, to projects that don't meet those criteria. And so, as a result of providing density or height bonus, your fee waiver is reduced, basically by half for rental projects, and for for-sale projects, we don't, there doesn't need to be a fee waiver if you use height or density bonus. So you're really just picking one or the other. And this is a summary.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just another question on this. So, I'm liking what I'm hearing so far. So, my question is, what is your experience, and I don't know if you have it, but I'd like to know. So, let's suppose we pass this, right? And we say, "We love this," we just say, "Done, you guys are awesome, thank you." So what happens, let's suppose it's a year from now, and we're going to be annexing a 10-acre piece of land into the town, up on the corner, like, like, let's suppose, for example, Sundance and Highway 66, that big fight we had over putting in additional housing. How does the public respond? Right now, we're talking about affordable housing. As a group, in the, in the ideological sense, we're talking about, we need affordable housing. But when you get down to a micro level, dealing with neighborhoods, how do people respond when there's a developer coming in saying, "We're going to do 120% density, we're going to do two or three stories higher, and neighbors, we're putting in 20% affordable housing?" I mean, right now, we have that use by right, we fit within the, we fit within the LACP or the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, and, you know, so, you're not quite at the zoning max, so we're going to allow you in. What will the dynamic be when we're dealing with, it's no longer use by right, but how dare you city council and city staff, increase bonus by 20%, increase height by two or three floors, and you're sticking our neighborhood with the affordable housing? I can't imagine me, ever, I mean, saying, "Oh, no problem, we're just going to go ahead and ignore you, because we need affordable housing." Will this actually get built with these incentives?
So, multi-part question, and, let's take the last first. Will this get built with these incentives? In terms of that question, we think the answer is yes, because this closes the gap and brings the project back into the black in terms of a pro forma.
What I'm saying is that, politicians have the, could I look at my neighbors in Ward One and go, "I'm sorry, I'm, you're getting 20% bonus, you're getting two to three stories, and you're also getting stuck with the affordable housing issue, I know everybody's yelling at me in this room, but I'm going to do it anyway, because I've got the iron will of politics?"
Well, we think that the various aspects around these parameters make it reasonable. Specifically, 10 to 20% affordability, that's, you know, everyone has these questions, and they're very complicated questions. Whether it's integrating the mix within a classroom, you know, what percentage can you integrate within a classroom of diversity and still maintain momentum? I mean, those are the conversations we have in my neighborhood, quite frankly. It's a similar kind of conversation here. What, and 10 to 20%, you will find affordable housing developers that understand the challenge of how you balance buildings, developments, neighborhoods, and this is a threshold that in the long run, you can't tell. You can't tell which house is which, which door is which, which neighbor is which, you really can't.
And I guess, and I, again, I guess what, I guess really what I'm asking is, is that answer theory?
Oh, no, no, no.
Or, what I'm saying is, have you seen city councils pass this and say, "Oh, yeah, not a problem"?
And, we work with developers, one in particular, who is particularly well-experienced in terms of work in Colorado. And he has a particularly successful project, and we were talking about it about a year ago after it was fully leased. And we, it's mixed income, and we had this exact conversation. And at the 10, and, and I think that it's important, because I think your larger question is, how do you explain to neighbors, when they're here in these council chambers, why a policy is a good policy? And at the end of the day, these thresholds are small enough that if the project is well-built and well-maintained, you can't tell the difference.
Okay, cool, thanks.
So, if I could just add to that as well, the density bonus and the height bonus are only allowed in certain, in specific areas where, through the Envision Longmont process, there's already been significant input that people are willing to have those density bonuses and height bonuses within those areas. So that, I mean, I know it doesn't necessarily answer the one person or the, you know, neighbors that have an issue, but as a whole, that has already been determined at the community, community level. And I think to a certain extent as well, if we go ahead and allow this by right, we are saying, this is a community value. There's an infrastructure to our community that's needed, and it's, one of those legs of infrastructure is affordable housing. And by having only 10 or 20% in a development, it is spreading it around the city, it's not concentrating it, it, it is more palatable.
You know, I think when we went to NLC, went to all those meetings, we learned what successful cities do, and one is, you distribute your affordable housing throughout the city, and that helps the schools, it helps the neighborhoods, it helps the diversity, it helps everybody, so.
So, the, what we wanted to end on before we, we open up to, to questions and discussion, was what the impact on the city would be. And so, we measured what the, the amount of revenue that you would forego in fee waivers would be if you, the incentive was provided. And so, and, in short, if you waived fees, you would approximately, it would equate to approximately 25,000 to 50,000 per affordable unit produced, would be the amount of revenue that you're foregoing. And so, that gives you a proxy of sort of what, the, the level of, of lost revenue to these development fees would be, these funds would be. And that varies, both for the rental and the for-sale, obviously, the for-sale having a lower incentive level has less needed subsidy. And then also, if you used, as I mentioned, height or density bonus, that reduces the amount of revenue that you need to forego.
We put in this slide to try to give you the full picture of what this policy, the implications of this policy. So, I think everything EPS does, if anything, we can be criticized for being too thorough. Our tables sometimes get too detailed, but we're showing you just a fraction of the model that we did generate. At any rate, we've worked this, these concepts forward and backward, developers have had input, staff, very close in terms of the staff and the larger comprehensive plan, planning process. So we think it's a good balance, and stays within the parameters of ultimately, an incentive-based project.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just for some clarification on this diagram here, when you say the revenue per affordable unit, is that the sale price of the affordable unit after the waiver fees? Or, what does that revenue pertain to?
Oh, sorry, I'm not sure that's a certain, that's the amount of revenue that you're foregoing from your development impact fees, basically. So the amount, you charge, there was, you know, probably 20 different development fees that you charge. So that would be the amount of lost revenue per affordable unit that was created. So you would not be charging that, that fee to the developer, because they provided affordable unit. And so, it was meant to show you what the per-unit gauge was, so you could understand. If you created 50 units, you would times 50 times, you know, 50,000, and that's the amount of money that you would forego.
Okay.
Also known as a price tag.
So then, my other question is, when you're talking about the, the cost of the unit to the developer, do we, or do you have a graph that shows, unless I'm just misinterpreting this, if they sold, when they sold their units, what would be the amount of indebtedness they would have? Would they be able to make a profit? Or is this just on their loans to the bank that they're trying to cover? It doesn't show what they would actually make as a profit selling or renting these, is that correct?
Yeah, so what we, what we did is we modeled what, so for a rental project, we modeled what their return would be if they didn't provide affordable units, and then we measured in what the return would be if they did provide affordable units. And sometimes, you know, it pushed it to no return, and they're in the negative. And so, the incentive backfills that. And so, the goal of the incentive program was to get them to the same return they would get, had, with the incentive. Now, on the for-sale side, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different. We're trying to get at the same profitability level, in terms of what the return would be. Going forward, though, so if a developer built a rental project, and then five years down the road sold it, the, the new owner would still have to require these units be affordable going forward. As for the for-sale, that would then transfer to the, the buyer of the unit. So, developer would build a unit, sell it to a buyer, and that buyer would not be able to, would have that restriction on, in place for 10 years. And so, I think under your current program, there's about a 3% increase on the amount of money you can make from your sale, but it's capped at that.
Like cost of living or something?
Yes, yeah. But after 10 years, then it's open. And, and so, that's one thing for you all to consider, too, is the length of period of affordability. If, if you're comfortable with 30 for rental and 10 for for-sale, if you want other ones, we can talk about that, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
On these tables and models, there's a difference between the market rate developers and the nonprofit developers. Are we assuming that this is all, I mean, they obviously need a larger profit margin if they're market rate, or they want one, anyway. Are we assuming that this is all that we're seeing here is all for profit? I mean, all market rate?
It is a consistent set of policies regardless of if it's a nonprofit or private-sector developer. What often happens with our clients who are nonprofits, is that they will use that profit margin to fund their, fund their agency.
Yes, that's right.
And many of the nonprofits that do the 9% tax credits, become very, they love these projects, because that profit margin, or the developer fee, in those deals goes directly to, to their agency operations.
Right.
So, how, and ultimately, how it gets used is up to them, but the consistent set of standards, we thought was important, knowing how both, both sides of the spectrum work.
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen? Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So on this chart we have before us, the revenue per affordable unit, say for the Garden Apartments, they're $41,708. You're saying that that's revenue lost?
Yes.
I have, and I keep this with me at all times, all of the fees that we charge for different types of houses. For example, Spring Creek Apartments, which was recently built, per unit, total fees per unit were only $9,301. So, how could we lose $41,000 when the total fees per unit is only $9,301?
So did that include the fees that we reduced? Because we did waive fees for that development.
This is all the fees they pay?
They paid. So that did not include, then, the fees that we probably waived and/or offset?
Do you know which ones they were?
The water sewer system development fees would have been offset, and then, I think it was 50% or, I think around 50% of all the fees, the plan review fee, the listing of the...
Those were reduced fees.
Right.
For the entire project, it was $558,000 in fees. So that's half of what it would have been?
Yeah.
Okay. For 60 units, that's incredible. That's, yeah.
I'll double-check on that to make sure I don't have that document with me, but I know we waived fees for that.
And then, there's a list now on this table that shows all the fees that you currently waive or offset.
Okay, this has a building permit fee on it, so...
It's probably at the 50% level.
That could be, yeah. That could be. Okay, just, those numbers didn't match up, so I was curious how we got to 41,000 per unit when there's only 9,000 paid. So even if it was half, it was double that, it would be only 18,000 paid, and yet, it's 41,000? Help me figure out the difference in those.
It also depends on if there are other incentives. For example, with the floor area, that amount of fee waiver drops in half, essentially. And, I would also, we've got on the slide right here, the list of, the full list of fees that come into play. And, I think it would be good, potentially, to reconcile that question, perhaps, after the council, in terms of that list.
We can do that. But, yeah, that was a big difference. If, if we're losing 41,000 in fees, and yet, we're only getting 9,000, I'm not sure where the difference is.
And were all fees waived for that, do you know, Kathy?
No, it was 50% of, I think it was 50%, I'd have to check and see what percentage was approved. But, the other thing is that, as Andrew indicated, a 60-unit development, and some of the fees are based on the valuation, is going to be less than the model, which is a 300 unit, so, so that could be a great portion of it as well. It's, I wouldn't say it's three times it, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a really big difference, so, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, can you go back to the last slide that went on, please? The one that said 25 to 50,000? That one. Okay, so, next question. So, if we, so, assuming that number's right, 25 to 50,000 in lost revenues per affordable unit produced as a result of this? So, again, going back to my, why not keep it simple? And this isn't a suggestion, it's a question to understand. So, if, let's just suppose that it's 50 units per year, that we hit our 50 to 100-unit goal, and we say, "Look, we're going to, we're going to hit our 50 on the low end," right? And set, let's just say it's a $25,000 hit, right? So that's 1.25 million that the city's losing in revenues. Wouldn't it be simpler just to pass a resolution as council to say, "You take those fees and give it to Kathy to leverage off federal programs"?
You're, you're assuming that you get those fees, those only come in on the developments. So it's not a consistent number in terms of...
Got it, so it only comes in on the developments, I get that. So it only comes in on the developments, I get that. But it's a wash either way, so we're not getting the units, or the incentives, it's not really an incentive, it's basically saying, we're gonna pay you back, right?
Well, it's, it's saying, we're going to reduce your costs.
Right.
Because your revenue is going down, too. So we're gonna...
Correct. So, but my, so, so my point is, it's not really giving developers anything, it's just that if the market conditions are right, and you're gonna build anyway, you might as well build affordable housing because we're gonna make it up to you.
So, yes.
So, so my, so my point is, instead of doing that, when the market's dictating that it's time to build housing anyway, why, instead of going through all this rigmarole, wouldn't it be easier just to say, they still have to pay the fees, but we're going to take that 1.25 to 2.5 million and just give it to the city so that Kathy can then use that money to go out and do what she does to leverage that money?
So you are, this could be the perfect segue into the last part of the presentation. We've got about another eight slides.
Okay.
On ways to expand the city's financial base for housing. Because the right answer is both. Ideally, you want your developers incorporating, with their expertise, a developer who can be efficient and he or she can go vertical in ways that staff can do only so much. And you're amplifying your ability to go vertical in many different projects throughout, scattered throughout the city. And you also do want to do exactly what you just said. Because you do want to leverage federal dollars, and you do want to give cash to staff to do competitive processes and say, we've got money, come to us with your best ideas and your own leverage of, of private donations. And both are ultimately the most effective way to go.
I wasn't saying anything, I was just asking a question. So I shall. You're doing a great job just leading me along tonight.
Right.
I await your eight slides.
I mean, that's, that's a great question, but I, I think one benefit of trying to get to the private market to build units is it starts to spread those affordable units over several different projects and not just isolating them into specific affordable projects. And it really starts to create those mixed-income housing developments that are really beneficial to the community.
Do you want the last eight slides now?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Let's hit it.
Eight or nine? Don't hold me to it.
Okay, so, based on your direction from our last meeting and outreach to the stakeholder community and some industry best practice, we, we had whittled down to a list of potential revenue sources to get us from about a half a million that you've already found for the Affordable Housing Fund in this budget to a million, which would, is what was recommended, I believe, from the Workforce Housing Task Force in terms of an annual amount of money for at least 10 years to, to create a revolving fund. And so, these are the ones that we, we considered additionally. We looked at what level of tax or fee you would need to charge to generate the revenue, and what some barriers are for those. So first is a dedicated sales tax. So this is a, a sales tax that would go directly to your Affordable Housing Fund. You could choose to exempt things like grocery or prescription medicine sales out of that to reduce the impact on lower-income households. So using this tool to raise a half a million dollars, you would need to increase your sales tax rate by .025% or .05 to raise a million annually. So considerations, you have to ask the, the public if they're all right with you taxing them more, as I'm sure you're painfully aware of. And then, it's, it's not a lot of increase needed to raise this amount of money. I mean, that .025% is not a huge increase in terms of your, your tax rate. So it might be more beneficial to consider packaging this with other things that you may want to generate additional revenue for in the future, and go for one, one ask to the public and not sort of piecemeal. Excise tax. So an excise tax is a tax on residential commercial development, and you would, you could apply it here to new development. It's, it's basically a per-square-foot or a per-dollar-value tax on a project. And so an estimate would be, to raise a half a million dollars annually, you need to charge about a dollar per square foot tax. Our research on comparable communities found that they charge anywhere between 50 cents to $13 per square foot, and that, those are, those are communities throughout the nation, so I'm not necessarily comparable, but communities that do use this approach. Considerations, again, voter approval and would require you to create a collection Use tax, so you charge use tax on a variety of things here, so you could charge additional use tax on construction materials, which directly ties the additional tax to development. Your current use tax rate is 3.275, it matches the sales tax rate, so. It's an addition, you could, to raise a half a million dollars, you would charge an additional 0.5% per square foot. Communities through the nation that use this, their rates are about .35 to 3%, 3%. Again, requires voter approval. An occupation tax, occupational tax, so this is an occupational privilege tax that assesses tax on persons employed within the city of Longmont. A tax here would be about $14 per employee per year to raise a half a million dollars. Communities that use an occupational privilege tax, they charge about $4 to $10 per employee per year. Considerations, it also requires voter approval. And then lastly, the last thing we looked at is a linkage fee. And so, sort of similar to a linkage program where you require developers to provide affordable units, this would just be a fee that you charge developers. So a fee charge on new development on either a per-square-foot or a per-value-of-project basis, it's similar to an impact fee. It, it would function very similar. So you would need a nexus study to, to tie the funds you generate to the need that you're trying to serve with those funds. And you would need to charge about a dollar per square foot to raise a half a million dollar annually.
If I can add, on this fee, linkage fee, some communities are thinking about both commercial and residential. This estimate right here happens to be what it would look like applied to a commercial setting. But if you applied it to both commercial and residential, that per-square-foot figure would drop. It does require a nexus study for both the, the beneficiary, or the degree of benefit attributed to the commercial and the residential, but it's just, it's kind of the latest trend nationally.
And then the last one we looked at is the idea of a document fee or recording fee. So this would be additional charge, you play on any document recorded, or you could do real estate development documents recorded by the city. And we, we, we looked at this, and really, you would have to charge a pretty obscene amount on each document recorded to, to generate any, any significant revenue, over $1,000 per document. So it's, it's not something that would make sense for Longmont. And we actually don't have any other Colorado cities or counties that charge additional fees above what the state man, or the state lays out in terms of fees. And so it's unclear if it's actually legally possible. So that is not something to consider. But we wanted to show you that we looked at it, and it's not something that we can use. Oh, and we have a bunch of extra diagrams. So that's the end of our presentation, so we're...
Mayor Coombs.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Under the revenue generations, did, have you ever considered an annual rental license for both commercial and residential? Just an annual permit, a rental license?
It's a great idea. We didn't evaluate that.
Is there any way you can evaluate that for the city of Longmont?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I guess, just sitting here, if we can provide fee waivers to gen, to incentivize develop, private development to deliver 10% affordable housing per se, what's, how does that tie to a potential sales tax, for example, to generate revenue?
I think that the way you would use sales tax proceeds is that you could generate a fund that then staff can use, and, and other cities do this, where they will RFP out and say, we've got a certain amount of dollars to match to your project, come to me with really creative ideas, and we're gonna, we're gonna put this into a single project at a single site. And it would be some kind of partnership where the city provides those funds to a local nonprofit, to a developer, whoever comes up with the best ideas. And that would be the use of those types of proceeds.
So it's a parallel path?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you could, like we said, you could target even lower income levels where the incentives don't necessarily fill the gaps. And then as well, you could do things like land, you could buy land, land bank, and, and be able to participate in affordable projects by providing land. There's just a variety of uses that you could use.
Do, have we done any study on the impact of the enterprise funds that, if we don't backfill these fees?
No, but that would be an impact. You know, just like the incentives that we provide off of the, the fee rebates, where it does impact the revenue coming into the general fund, there will be an impact to the enterprise fund that we would have to model if council wanted us to look at that.
So you mentioned something about the fee waiver program needs to be simplified. Can you go into that a little more detail?
That is, what it is today is fairly opaque. It's difficult for users, for developers, to come to the city and understand if they, what the actual bottom-line result is. And as complicated as the options are that we just reviewed, they're much, much simpler than what the city has today.
And another layer to that is trying to build in ways that it's, using incentive is an administrative review and not necessarily something that has to come to planning commission and council every time. And that really has a big impact on the developer, where they're not worried about whether or not they're gonna get the incentive or not, and have to wait till the development approval to, to be able to bank on that. And so if they feel that it's, it's there and they can use it, and they don't have to worry about it, it reduces a ton of risk and really increases the incentive for them to use it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna weigh in here. You know, .025% sales tax, which requires that citizens, you know, the positive thing about that is then the citizens get to weigh in, you know, does the community really value some of the benefits of affordable housing? And some of the big, big benefits is it distributed the, the housing diversity throughout the city. It, you know, ultimately is going to get you high density or higher density in places we want high density, which is a good thing, which helps transportation. And, you know, it's, it's 25 cents extra sales tax per $100. It would raise our Longmont City sales tax from .03275 to .033. You know, I'd like to remind everybody that Longmont's sales tax, city sales tax rate is 20% lower than all the other cities, than the median average of all the cities in Boulder County. So we already have low sales tax relative to other cities in Boulder County. Plus, I think, it's always good to get your community to see where do they stand, do they really value, you know, affordable housing? And I think it'd be a good idea, myself, to actually go out to a vote on this. I, I think, if you are, we have a really smart population, if you've really educated people on the benefits of affordable housing and the, the small cost of it, I think it's something to be considered. It's just my view. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. On the property tax, are we, all of this development is going to put a lot of children in our schools? Are we talking about just the city's portion of this property tax and not the state or county?
Yeah, that's all you would be able to, would use, would be the city's, without the use of, say, urban renewal or something like that, so, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, I guess the, going through the different options, I, first of all, I share a lot of Mayor Coombs's, Mayor Coombs', is this?
Yes.
Mayor Coombs', Mayor Coombs', thoughts, his, his feelings on the issue. Just going down, obviously, I think the recording or document fee, as you pointed out, is nuts. I, I don't see a big difference between the excise tax and the linkage fees. I don't think it's fair to put the burden on the backs of the builders. One particular industry, I've never thought that's fair. It's reminiscent, I think, of that inclusionary zoning that's so interesting to talk about and discuss, but I don't think that we should focus on anybody else. I also don't think that it's fair for, I don't think an occupational tax is fair. I've got, I mean, I've got several employees that, that don't live in Longmont, others that do, and just because they have a job, you know, they're not necessarily all high-paying jobs, and putting a tax on them to account for our, our affordable housing, I don't, I don't think that's fair. I think a use tax, again, just because you're buying things or have personal property, I don't think that's necessarily fair. I'm, if we're, if we're going to do anything along this route, I would probably, as, as I said with the mayor, prefer to take it to the voters and ask about a dedicated sales tax. But I mean, but then again, as we're doing all these things, I, I keep thinking that when I, when I graduated from school with my young family, I did not belong in Boulder. Not everybody belonged in Boulder, and I didn't have a problem with that. And so, I, I hate to say it, but I don't think everybody belongs in Longmont either. It will be impossible to build affordable housing for all the people that want to have an affordable house. And so what happens is, you, you, you can't afford a place, like I couldn't afford Boulder, so I moved to Longmont. And I've spent the last 16 to 17 years trying to make Longmont a great place to live. And it's obviously not all me. There's 90,000 people onboard this bus, but we've done great things over the last couple decades. City staff, previous councils, our citizens. And we've made Longmont into a more desirable location. It becomes more expensive to live here. And then other people, like me, but 20 years ago, are gonna go, screw this, I think I'm gonna move to Erie or DeKono. And they're gonna go out and do, make their city better. And so it's, it's, I think it's, it's a little, I, I mean, thinking about that 2,496 number that we're behind, it, my, in my mind, this isn't a fight that we'll ever win, because if we offer houses below market value, if I say, hey, you wanna buy my house for $200,000, you will have a line from here till Texas wanting to buy my house for a couple hundred thousand dollars below fair market value. So the, the question in my mind is, to what extent are we going to fight the battle that will never be won? And I think that going back to what we decided, the 50, was it 75 to 100 or 50 to 100?
50 to 100.
50 to 100?
Yeah.
So the goals we set are 50 to 100, and getting that million-dollar annual fund that the Housing Task Force came up with, I really think that that needs to be our, our focus. And so if we go after a sales tax, the question I would have for staff, and I guess this is for Jim Golden, because he's the guru in the back that isn't saying much, the question would be, what would the sales tax have to be in order to hit our goal?
They've already given us that in this presentation.
I know that. But the thing is, but that there is gonna raise a million bucks, but are we going to include, this is the last eight to nine slides, but we saw 17 or 18 slides before that, about fee waivers, and that's... The what?
What is it gonna do to the budget?
That's, you're right, that's gonna impact the budget. So between the two, we're looking at somewhere between $500,000 and $5 million, not the 1 million. So regardless of what we do, I'd wanna make sure that we're clear that the sales tax, or whatever we decide to do as a council, and the incentives are going to meet our goal of 50 to 100 and that million-dollar figure, rather than chasing after the white rabbit that we will never be able to catch.
Thinking about it broadly, and then we can think about the numbers specifically. As Matt mentioned earlier, Longmont's at the turning point about, from becoming a greenfield city to an infill city. And as land becomes more limited, prices are going to go up. What actions might you want to take in 2016 that will affect the trajectory of the city over the next couple decades and beyond? And having a diversity of wage levels and corresponding employee levels can only help your local economy.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I'm just saying that I don't wanna get ahead of, I don't wanna do more than what we already said we were going to do. And I'm hearing numbers tonight that are considerably bigger than what we talked about before.
Well, I guess one way to look at it is, so if we can get one project per year to use the incentives, that, so a 300-unit apartment project, so that's 30 units, so you're about halfway to your goal, and that's only at that one AMI level. And then I, I guess a question for Kathy would be, what, how much, how, how many units could you leverage with the funds that you're generating? I, I think is the way to look at it. you leverage with the funds that you're generating, I think is the way to look at it. And so if you created a dedicated revenue source, what could you theoretically leverage in terms of built units based on your past performance and trying to get affordable units built? So I don't have those numbers at the top tips of my fingers.
So I think the other thing to consider is that this is a multi-pronged approach to dealing with multi-levels of need in the community. So the incentive program, again, hits really the 50% AMI level, incenting the private sector to build affordable housing and include it within their mixed income developments, whereas the Affordable Housing Fund and the 1 million is really looking at supporting that lower income level that we're not going to be able to get to in any other way. And that will be highly leveraged so that the funds that, and if we keep the offset and not waive those impact fees, then that has to come from the Affordable Housing Fund as well. So you're using that to also incent the private sector. So it's a multi-pronged approach to dealing with various AMI levels and areas of the affordable housing of the community.
We're talking about expanding that million is really what we're talking about. It's not a bad thing, I'm just saying that's what we're talking about.
You know, the million was never going to be the ultimate solution anyway. It was just kind of one tool of the vehicle to allow us to do that. And I never looked at the million dollars wasn't going to build us, it was just part of the tool or the process. I mean, I think this is great. I mean, I love the idea of, you know, building high and building with density because that's great for transportation, it's great for the diversity of the city, it's great for city infrastructure, it's less sewer pipes, water pipes per person, it's great for the environment, it's great for livability and affordability. So I'm in total agreement of that joint concept of fee waivers plus heights and density bonuses. Couple that with this million dollar revolving funds and we can start to take some steps. You know, we're never going to solve the affordable housing problem, but we can work towards getting to the, you know, 50 units, maybe 75 units a year by getting two or three of these projects to pencil out on paper so that developers come in and actually build these projects. I mean, I think that's the goal we're aiming for here, and I think you've provided us great information and.
So I think Kathy has some questions and she wants to work you all through, but the one thing I also wanted to point out, when the million dollars was discussed, there were already incentives that we were providing for affordable housing.
Right.
And so that's where that multiple, multi-pronged approach comes in.
So I thought it might be helpful to walk through some of the things that we've thrown at you on a one-by-one basis and get some feedback and see if we can wrap this up once and for all and bring things back, not have to bring things back unless.
Do you want to take the questions now or do you want to wait till after she goes through her presentation and then come back?
I'd like to talk.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I am totally, in total agreement that we should do both fee waivers and height density bonuses. I think we should also simplify, I think that's always a good thing, simplify what we have now, do that, you know, the package option, as it were. And I also think we should go to the voters and ask them if they're willing to pony up the dough. I think that it is up to all of us to help and we should put it to the voters.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I agree with the mayor and with Councilwoman Finley. I, you know, it will require, of course, voter approval for some of these things. So, but I do think a .024 dedicated sales tax is something we should, we could bring to the voters and hopefully explain to them and get the, I think this multi-pronged approach has enormous ability to be workable because it requires you to take less money from any one person or any one group. So I would, I would encourage the dedicated sales tax and the excise tax and the use tax and the linkage fee. I think that, of course, I don't think any of us really, well, I'm not for the recording and document fee, and the occupational tax, that just feels kind of odd to me because you're, you're taxing both employees and employers and that just seems too much, you know? It seems like we're going backwards. So I think that, you know, as Mr. Lovell testified, there's a huge need for this. 64% of Longmont residents are housing burden, which means they're paying over 30% of their taxes. We've got 550 homeless kids in the city. We've got during the school year, the average, this is inextricably linked with low wages. The average wage, according to the U.S. Census in Longmont, is $29,000 a year. So we have to approach this also on, as you said, on the level of working on our economic development as well. And thanks.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I waited for all the slides to be done except for yours, Kathy, sorry. I actually like what I see. Whether it's a sales tax that we asked for remains to be seen. I would definitely, as Councilmember Moore mentioned, I would definitely like to know what the impact would be to the general fund, the funds, and how that's going to be dealt out because as Councilmember Bagley said, it's just, I'm not talking 1 million and fee wa, you know, it's, what else, what's that actual total amount that we're going to, that we're going to take a hit? I mean, tonight, we're also talking about quiet zones and millions of dollars there. So, you know, it's always rough, you know, we have a $300 million budget, but apparently, you know, it's never enough. It's always rough and trying to get people to understand it's not one bucket, it's multiple buckets that we can't take from here and here and there and there. But with that, I do like what you've provided. It's, I think it's doable, it's approach, it's, can be implemented, but the two, the real question I have is what is the overall effect as far as taking hits to certain budgets and how that's going to work?
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. My concern is exactly what Councilman Santos and Councilman Moore spoke about for the general fund because all of these waivers are revenue to the city in some form or other. And if we're talking about the sewer fund and not being backfilled, where is that money that we need in the sewer fund coming from? I wouldn't have a problem going to the voters for a tax because that would be their skin in the game for telling them that we think that this is something very important that we need to address. However, we're giving fees, fee waivers, we're, and other incentives to the industry, but what is their skin in the game in our revenue source? And that has to be addressed. I mean, you just can't come and say, give us, give us, give us, and we're not going to help replenish part of what we're taking away. So I definitely would want to go to the voters. I think that they would appreciate being part of the whole system and would vote for this. But we do need to look at some other tax or some other way for the construction industry, the developmental industry to be a part of the revenue source as well. I don't really like any of these as far as the occupational tax, the linkage fee, and like you said, the recording and document fee, but I, I don't know how much income an annual rental license would or permit would, would bring in on every single unit. So perhaps if we could have that feedback before we decide.
Isn't that fee just going to be passed back to the residents that live there?
I have no idea.
Of course it would.
Well, so would all these others, the linkage fee, the excise, they're all going to be passed on to the buyers. We know that. That's what they do. So whatever gets revenue into our coffers.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's been said a lot, but I echo the comments. I'm for the sales tax if we're going to do something, and I'm also for the height variance and the density bonus. I'm also for the question of, please tell us how it's going to impact the general fund. And specifically, for example, take an example, 1,300 units are currently being built on the 80% AMI and above. Let's just assume that only 10% of them said, you know what, I'm going to take advantage of some of this, and we're going to make 10% of it affordable housing. And it's the low end of the 25,000 to 50,000 that we're losing. That's, if you take 25,000 times 130, that's 3.25 million. On the high end, if they do 20% or 260, times 50,000, that's 13 million. So my question is, if we're giving up those fees, where does that come from? How does that impact the budget? And would it be better, again, to take that money and give it back to you to leverage it? I'd like to know the answer to that. And then the other thing is that kind of something that's been talked about, but we've not brought up, I don't, now that the fracking ban is over, I'd like to know, what are the anticipated revenues from fracking? And are they available to put towards affordable housing? So, I mean, they're going to be drilling and it's all fair and square now, according to the Supreme Court, so let's try to make some lemonade here or petroleumade or whatever. So I'd like to know the answer to that, too.
Okay, Kathy, go ahead with your presentation.
All right, so some of this may be, I hope it's not repetitive, but I really do need some direction on some of these. So this particular one is probably only important to me because I really need to know what my goal is in moving forward. So at the retreat, we talked about 10% of the city's housing stock be permanently affordable would be our goal in addition to, or supporting the 50 to 100 units that we would be aiming to create annually. So I just wanted to confirm that we're good with this. We've actually incorporated it into Envision Longmont, so I hope we are, but we can change it if we're not. So feedback on that?
I'm fine with that goal. I think it's a good, it's a lofty goal, but it's something we should work towards. Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm fine with that goal, too. I think it should be more, but I think this is something we can commit to and slowly work toward.
Councilmember Santos.
Mayor Coombs, I would be fine with what is recommended, especially the last bullet that has to be.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no point in having one if you're not revisiting and checking.
Exactly, whether it needs to go up or it needs to go down.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In spirit, I agree, but my question is, so if you add up all the units, again, this damn for rent housing gap paper that you should have never given me, but if you add up all the units available, for granted, this is just rentals, it's 11,865. 10% of that is 1,186.5. That is less than the number of available units on the 0 to 30% AMI level. So what does 10% of the city's housing stock mean?
So our, our current housing stock is probably around 32,000, 35,000, so it'd be 10% of that should be affordable, not differentiating renter or for sale at this point in time, but probably down the road, maybe having some goals around that. But right now, our greatest need is rental, so that would be the focus.
So you're looking at doubling, but I guess the next question would be, how many units of the non-rental ilk, so to speak? How many for-sale homes are affordable housing?
Well, I know that, but not off the top of my head because it goes into that 5.02% figure. I am thinking it is 100 or less at this point.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Which would include the habitat homes.
I'd support 10%.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, the 10% is a percentage, but it doesn't really put us into a number of homes or a number of units. I think it'd be good to have both of those pieces of information is like, if it's 10%, that equals this many units. And then what we could forecast out for the next five or 10 years in order to have a snapshot of the future of when we need to revisit our, our goals. It is a lofty goal, but at the same time, if you don't have a goal, you never get there, so.
So on your units per year, one of the things that we talked about was the 50 to 100 that we're keeping in terms of the number of units in this process.
Right, but as population increases, is that 50, I mean, what, if you model that out five years, is that 50 to 100 still the right number? I mean, it'd be good to know that right now rather than.
No, it's not.
It's not.
We know that now, it's not, but that's what we are, feel we're capable of being able to do with the funding that we have right now.
Well, yeah, the funding you have right now, but if you have a model of it, you can build your funding up earlier than later rather than after the fact. You can have it in a bank, so to speak, and not have to look back and say, oh, we should have done this. It's a little bit more forward-thinking planning and I'd like to see a little more of that.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would support this goal. I think it's a good goal and that 10% of the housing stock is always going to be a moving target, isn't it? So if you said we had 38,000 homes at the, or housing units at the moment, then our 10% would be 3,800 is what we need today. So, yeah, I support this.
Okay, you got your answer.
All right. So on the fee waivers, given what the presentation was, the first question is, do we want to allow impact fees to be fully waived and not backfilled? And what I think I have heard is that this needs a lot more information brought back to you. So what would be the impact on those impact fees? Do we include the electric community investment fee as well as the water sewer system development fees? And what would that look like to both of those, those funds? So we would definitely, if this is something that you want us to look at further, we could get with Public Works and LBC and figure out what the impact would be to the rest of the ratepayers and what we would need to do.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You're talking over my head, meaning that I, during the presentation, there was that 60% and 100%, and I'm thinking, I don't know enough about the topic to be able to answer your question, at least me personally. I think that I'd like city staff to give a recommendation so that it's in alignment with the numbers that the consultants gave. I don't know enough, other than that list of fees that was back on slide one or two, I really couldn't give an educated answer.
So we're really talking about the offset fees as opposed to offsetting them from the Affordable Housing Fund, waiving them, and what is the impact to those fees, those funds then, to those funds? So, yeah, bring back additional information. But I just want to make sure you, you want that, it's not a off-the-board altogether. You do want the more information about what the impacts would be and a recommendation.
And so as we're talking about this and as we, as we look to bringing that information back to you all, there is a strong chance, it's highly likely, that that will impact the rates. And so in order to fund it in that direction, there will need to be a corresponding impact to the rate piece. And so, so to understand, I mean, in doing this, there is that catalyst that moves forward or we don't do something that we planned in those utilities. And I'm saying that now because that is a strong possibility, and if that's not council's desire to look at something like that, I would rather us know about it now than to go through the work in the pro forma.
I would say.
And it's essentially the same thing that happens in the general fund, it's impacting the choices that we're making.
Why doesn't it now?
Pardon?
Why doesn't it now impact us? We're doing that now.
So it doesn't in the enterprise funds because in the enterprise funds, they waive the fees and then they use the Affordable Housing Fund to backfill those fees into the enterprise funds. So they don't have that impact in the calculation. But I just wanted to be completely transparent in that there is a possibility this is going to happen.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. C.
C, allow all fees we charge except for county sales tax to be waived. And I can't remember, in the presentation, was city sales tax part? It was part of the fees? I would like that one to not be waived, the city sales tax. Or if we could, the property tax. Those are two taxes that really affect our general fund. And if at all, I, those are ones that I don't want to be waived.
So one clarification on the city sales tax. We can only waive 2% of the sales tax.
Right.
So it's not all of it, so. And that is currently allowed now. I'm just letting you know.
Councilmember Christensen?
So when we're talking about fee waivers, I do think that some can be waived, but I would like the package so that it's tied with density and height. And there are certain cases where if you just add density and height, then there's no need for that, for the fee waivers. So I think that's a good thing. I don't understand why we're allowing, currently, we're waiving fees to be waived on all units in a development, not just on the affordable units. It seems to me it will incent them to build more affordable units if we're waiving fees on them. So I would prefer to just have it on the affordable units, although there's a chance they won't build it at all unless they can get that, so.
It wouldn't generate nearly, it would, it wouldn't generate enough money to offset if you just did it on the affordable units.
Really?
Yeah. So you have to consider the whole project for it to work.
Okay. I understand.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We really need the full information in order to make this decision. We need all the information on the impacts to all those funds before we can make the decision, make an educated decision.
I was kind of leaning towards the answer B, allow fees to be waived on all units in a development, like we're currently doing. So I guess that's probably as clear as mud to you, right, Kathy?
So, maybe if I try summarizing. So I didn't hear an outright no to not including the impact fees in being considered to be waived, but you want to know the impacts on those fees before making a decision on that. So it's not totally out. You want to hear more information about that. Okay. The fees to be waived on all units in development, that is really how we operate now. As Matt indicated, it gives the dollar amounts to actually incent the affordable units to be developed. It still is that 25,000 to 50,000 per affordable unit is what it amounts to. And we only put the affordability on the affordable units, not on the whole project, obviously. So that's a little bit of information, kind of, more than a question, I guess. And then allow all fees we charge except for county sales tax to be waived. That would be a difference because there were those five, I think, fees that were at the bottom of that page, the county, not the county sales tax, but the ECIF fees and I forget what the last one was, the use tax, maybe, that currently are not waived. So again, we can bring that back with the impact fee discussion and the impacts to the general fund on that.
And on the enterprise funds, you're interested, but be mindful if there's a rate impact.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So then, the density bonus and height bonus were recommended as part of package incentives. I think I heard generally that people were supportive of those and the areas that they would be allowed and in the way that it was presented. The property tax abatement rebates, is that something that y'all are interested in?
Councilmember Moore?
That particular item didn't seem to have as big an impact on the developer interest, so I don't think I'm going to want to go along with that.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It'd be good to at least have the information on how, what that would do. I mean, a lot of this is which bucket's going to come out of? Are we going to have to raise rates? Once we get that type of, a little bit more, I know you want it simplified, but a little bit more down to the details about exactly what it's going to cost in certain areas, I think that's what we're looking, we need that information.
And I think you can complicate on the city end, as long as it's simple to the users of it, too.
Right, right. For that, I understand. But I mean, again, how this was laid out today, very well presented, and I greatly appreciate it. But now, with some of the questions, it's now we need those details.
All right. And really, truly, the property tax abatement rebates, with what Matt and Andrew presented, to me, that seemed more that maybe it's a bonus thing. So if somebody is willing to go above and beyond, or for the lower income units, maybe that is a sweetener or something like that. So, but we'll look at that and bring that back as a possibility.
Okay.
And then making incentives for affordable developments a by right administrative approval.
I like that myself, but make it simple, easy. Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I was actually going to comment on the property tax. I agree with Councilman Moore. I'm not very interested in this. But if somebody is willing to build 30% and below, that would be a good time to use this, as you said, a sweetener. I do think that, as you said, the incentives are, this is a very complicated process for developers, and it needs to be simplified in order to make it more appealing to them, whether they're nonprofit or whether they're market developers. And so initially, I, my instinct is to not do this, but I do see how the security of knowing that these, they can count on these incentives is a good thing, so.
Councilmember Bagley?
I think that the, making the incentives for affordable developments a by right administrative approval would, that concern I had of, you know, do we have the guts to look at them and say, I'm sorry, it's our choice, but go away? I think that that would be the only way that you could actually make it so that, you know, you take it out of the hands of the politicians and allow people to do what the politicians have, right now, without all the pressure, determined to be what's best for the city. And then as far as the property tax abatement, I mean, like, right, I'd like to see the information on a gut level as someone who owns commercial property, you know? No offense, but I think everybody should pay. If I have to pay, everybody should pay. But the reality is, I mean, a $350,000 to $400,000, you know, commercial unit, you're paying about $700 to $1,100 a month in property taxes. It's really hard to, you know, rent it out and make money. And so if you're going to give up 10%, 20%, 30% of your rental space in an apartment building, for example, to, you know, for affordable housing, it might be the only way that it becomes doable or possible. So emotionally, I don't like it, but intellectually, I'd like to see the numbers before making a determination.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. On the property tax abatement, are we talking about the initial building of the building or is this a yearly abatement or?
We modeled it at 10 years, so for 10 years.
So it'd be for 10 years?
Yeah. But you could play with that. But doing it for 10 years started to approximate what the waivers would be at in general revenue. But it's, again, for the developer, it's not upfront, so it necessarily doesn't have the same impact.
Yeah. That's not very appealing to me.
Do you have an opinion on the by right?
Yep. I think it's good.
That's three opinions on that? Yeah. Okay, sorry.
I noted earlier.
Okay, sorry. I must have missed it. All right. So, again, at the retreat, we talked about, this wasn't presented tonight, but we talked about putting together a policy that land that is considered surplus that the city owns be offered first for affordable housing development. There's not a lot of land that the city owns, but there are some that would be very good for development. The Eight Marshall Place sale to Habitat, is it a good example of that? It doesn't have to be donated necessarily. We could do it through an RFP process or some kind of formal process. But I wanted to get some feedback on this, whether or not that is something that we should go ahead and put together a policy on, maybe for you to take a look at more closely.
Councilmember Christensen?
I personally don't think we should make that a, kind of a demand, that, because it sort of hamstrings us to say, oh, that has to be offered for affordable housing But I would like to see us, as we have done, do some land banking so that we have land available for nonprofit developers or for people, for developers like Habitat, for, like we're doing up north. And I think that changing the period of affordability for rental development to 30 years is a good idea. And especially because it coincides with, as you said, with the financial agreements with the banks.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't think we should codify that policy. It depends upon where this, where the land is and what the zoning is for the land. We just can't automatically say it's going to be for affordable housing immediately. And I do want to change the rental development to 30 years.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. No to number one, yes to number two.
Okay, I'll weigh in here. I'm going to say yes to number one and yes to number two because you already, before you're going to allow someone to build affordable housing yet, you're going to know whether or not that city surplus is in the right zoning anyway. So I'm confident you'll take care of that anyway. So yes and yes are my two answers. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I don't see that codifying that policy would be beneficial to the city in the long run. It would decrease our flexibility and the use of that property in the future. And changing the period of affordability for rental development to 30 years, I think is a good idea, especially for using public funds to build this affordable, to incentivize this affordable housing.
Meh and yeah.
Councilmember Santos?
Meh and yeah.
A no and a yes?
It's maybe and yes.
Okay.
You know, again, without seeing what, you know, what the ordinance would be, I don't know. But I do, yeah, what Councilmember Moore just said about, you know, tying the city's hands, I get that. But what Councilmember Christensen said about having some place, you know, land banking may be a good idea, but I, that one's kind of a meh. The other one's a, sure.
Is that M-E-H?
M-E-H. Telling you, it's already almost 9:30 and.
Yes, I know.
Yeah. This could be a long night.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would, so what if the city had this great piece of property and we could make a lot of money on it selling it for something else? And then we could use that money, then we could use that money to build affordable housing. So no on the first and yes on the second one.
Okay. All right. So I think you have your consensus.
One more slide here. So a lot of this, I think you have given some feedback on. What I believe that I heard pretty consensusly was yes on the sales tax, explore that further, bring that back as an option to put on the ballot, pretty much no to everything else.
Number one was okay. You're doing that.
And the continued incremental increases to the general fund, so, because that we didn't discuss very much, but.
I think you already have the thumbs up for that anyway.
Yeah, that's just something we would look in each budget process. And I think part of it also comes into in what type of timeframe you're looking at to hit the million. So if you have, I mean, if you say within X amount of time we want to do this, then we can plan that in the general fund increases versus if you want it immediate, then that's when the other options really have to start coming into play.
So I have a question. Doesn't use tax generally follow sales tax or can they be different? Can you have a different sales tax level? I mean, right now, our use tax and sales tax are identical. But do they have to be by city charter? Is that something that Jim can answer?
No. We can't answer.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, no, they don't have to be. I don't think it's going to be easy to administer, but on the other hand, charter doesn't change or control that, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, I definitely am against an occupational tax. I think that would hurt economic development and employment in Longmont. Councilmember Christensen?
If the sales tax fails, then we won't have anything. So I really still think we should pursue the sales tax on the ballot, the excise tax, the use tax, and the linkage fee.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sorry for chewing, but need some sugar. I don't mind going to the ballot. The residents are going to have to decide that. I'm not for always, I'm not for sales tax increases at all. But if it's a community value, then the community can vote for it. The rest, no.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also would be against excise tax, use tax, occupational tax, linkage fee, dock fee. I think those are all terrible ideas.
But appreciate it.
Councilmember Peck?
Sales tax, yes. But I do think that we, that the industry needs to have some skin in this game in revenue generating. So I still want you to put on this list the rental permit annual. And because the sales tax might fail, given that we're having a lot of other issues on this ballot, including school bond issues, we need either the excise or the use tax if we don't go with anything else.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, sales tax, excise tax, use tax, occupational tax, all require a vote of the people. And I think that the one that's most easily understood and has the highest potential to pass, in my opinion, is the sales tax. So that's the one I would support. And anything we can do to incrementally increase our allocation from the general fund directly to the Affordable Housing Fund is a good way to put the money back out in the community also. So that's my two cents.
And I have total confidence in the citizens of Longmont that they value affordable housing. And if you explain how the sales tax is used, how little it is, and what the benefits of the city are properly, the citizens of Longmont will support a sales tax for affordable housing is my feelings. Councilmember Christensen?
The linkage fee would not require a vote of the people. And if it were balanced between commercial and residential, it would be something like 50 cents a square foot, which for my house would be $4.50, $4.50 a year. So if you explain it to people that way, I don't think people would really object to making that kind of commitment to everybody having a roof over their head.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hanging in there with this. I know it was a lot, but it's really helpful to get this direction and be able to move forward.
Let's take a 10-minute break.
Thanks. No break.
If through regulatory change we can otherwise get the noise to be reduced, that's by far your cheapest option. You don't spend any money. So that's something to keep in mind. Should we also exhaust grant opportunities as a condition of dedicating city dollars? You know, Loveland is going after that Tiger grant. We don't know if they're going to be successful or not. But, you know, taking one dollar to get six, pretty good proposition. And I think Longmont citizens value that, that we don't just spend local dollars to solve that issue. What, if any additional community input do you want? I know you're thinking or considering whether or not you want to ask a question on the customer satisfaction survey, and I think Regal's going to come back and talk with you about some of those more detailed, what the survey might look like in an upcoming meeting. And the other one is, do you want to make this decision as part of the overall CIP review? And also within the context of all the new funding requests that are coming forward, in particular towards the Street Fund, and I'm sure towards the General Fund as well. There's really no shortage of them. There's quite a few of them coming up. So these are just things to ponder. And I think that's all I'm saying. So I just want us to think about those things. I'm gonna, yeah, questions? No. But I'm gonna turn it over to Tyler. He's gonna go through the update with you as expeditiously as we can, because we can tell you're tired. Present that information with you, get some initial thoughts that you might have, and then whatever additional direction you want to give us tonight would be helpful.
Alrighty, so Dale covered a lot of this already. We've been looking at this in one way or another since about 2008. 2010, we did our initial study of the quiet zone. We're here now with this update in 2016. The main goal of this was to update costs, see what's changed, if there may be new options available at any of these crossings. We took this to TAB last Monday. TAB saw the same presentation that you guys are about to see. At the end of the presentation, TAB made a motion to recommend to City Council that the city make funding available the next fiscal year to start implementing quiet zones at whatever rate we can possibly support. And there was some, quite a bit of discussion about this. In the end, the motion passed in favor of it, three to one. And Stephanie's gonna tell a little bit about his quiet zones, what's required, and what our options are.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Stephanie Anzio. I'm with Felsberg-Holtmilavig. And as Tyler indicated, I was the one who did the study for you back in 2010 and looked at the crossings along, specifically the BNSF Railway through Longmont. So the update actually includes 11 of the original crossings that we looked at, and then the five additional crossings west of Main that were originally looked at by RTD. So you can see those. Blue dots on the schematic are the original ones that we looked at, and the green dots are the additional five from RTD. So just taking you through how this all came about, a little bit of history. What was going on years ago in the late 90s, there was a lot of inconsistency in how locomotives blew the train horns across the United States. And so, FRA actually undertook an environmental impact statement, a study, to determine what the inconsistencies were and what would be the result of mandating a regular sound, regular pattern of train horns for every locomotive in the U.S. And so as part of that, they came out with what is short-term to the final rule. And basically what that did was it identified that locomotives will sound their horn at every at-grade crossing, a certain distance in advance, in a certain pattern, and within a certain decibel level. Now, as part of that, they recognized that up to that point, there had been a lot of available discretion to locomotive engineers with regard to when they sounded the horns. And so in order to allow for some silencing of train horns, they included what they call the quiet zone. And that basically allows communities to raise a level of safety at crossings to then in turn reduce risk at those crossings and allow the train horns to be silenced. So this rule came into effect in June of 2005. It was amended in 2006, and that's the rule that stands today. So a little bit about how quiet zones stand. What they actually are is around each individual crossing. A crossing of its own standing has to have a half a mile around it, quarter mile in advance, quarter mile past, in order to be established as a quiet zone. If there are any other public at-grade crossings within that quarter mile, they need to be included, and those crossings need to be addressed as a group. And the reason is because generally, the train horn starts to sound about a quarter mile in advance, not always a quarter mile past, but looking at both directions that trains travel through crossings. So the reason is basically to prevent any crossings that would be created as quiet zones from inadvertently having horns sounded through them because of their distance from another crossing. Currently, the final rule is open for comment. They opened it up earlier this year, and comments can be received at regulations.gov until July 5th of this year. They have some very specific questions that they've asked, but they'll really accept any comments with regard to quiet zones or the final rule. So again, half mile in length, right now, the minimum warning devices at any crossing in order to be eligible for quiet zone. It has to have advanced railroad crossing gate arms. Those are the approach gate arms on the side of the tracks that the approaching traffic is coming from. Flashing lights, which are the two parallel red lights that flash. Bells, constant warning time circuitry. That's circuitry within the track that measures both distance and speed of approaching trains. And power out indicators. Those are typically on the bungalow, and that's just a signal to the locomotive engineers that tells them if power is working or not working at the crossing. In the end, the quiet zone crossings actually get that no train horn placard that you see on the right added to the railroad crossing warning sign. So supplementary safety measures, these are the pre-approved crossing treatments that the FRA has already gone through and determined are acceptable. Temporary and permanent closures are two options if the roadway is either closed. Permanently, there will be no train horn sounded there as there's no more crossing. Temporary closures, so far, they've only really been successful at places like military bases because it involves closing and locking a gate and completely closing the crossing overnight. So in order to have it be closed exactly on time and opened on time, then it has to have somebody that's manning it like an MP. One-way streets with approach gates, this essentially forces traffic to approach the crossing from only one direction, and the gates come down to block any cars from approaching the crossing when a train is entering the crossing. Four quadrant gates, this is where you have approach gates and exit gates, one on each quadrant of the crossings, so that the track essentially is completely isolated in the event of an approaching train. And the last one is the raised medians with approach gates. This is the one you'll see most often, where we have approach gates which block the track from the direction of travel of approaching cars, along with a 100-foot raised median. That median can be shortened to 60 feet if there's an intersecting street or a public access at that 60-foot point. Anything within 60 feet has to be either closed or relocated. Now, the one additional item that they did add is called a wayside horn, and essentially a wayside horn does not create a quiet zone, it creates a quieter zone, because it still sounds when locomotives approach. However, it's actually a stationary horn that's installed right at the crossing, and it's actually set at a lower decibel level. It's set at 92 decibels, which is a little bit lower than the locomotive horn range. And so, let me go ahead and do the next one. They actually look like big megaphones that would be installed at each crossing. We have two of them, two crossings that are equipped with them right now in Colorado. And they function much like a locomotive horn, except the noise that is associated with it is much smaller and at a lower decibel, so it doesn't impact quite as many people. So the image you see now is typically a train that moves through a crossing. This noise cloud, we call it, actually represents trains moving in both directions, and that gives you an idea of how far out from an individual crossing a locomotive horn could be heard. And if we treated that same crossing with a wayside horn, it's a much smaller noise It's a much smaller noise cloud that actually just focuses the sound toward the approaching vehicles immediately at the crossing. There it is. And so it actually has a much less effect in terms of noise and the noise that's surrounding each crossing when the locomotive goes through. So right now, we have 15 quiet zones in the state of Colorado. Commerce City, Arvada, Fort Morgan, Winter Park, El Paso County, Monument, Douglas County, Brush, Westminster. You'll see that the number of quiet zones is not a one-to-one for the number of crossings. Quiet zones can include more than one crossing. And so, for example, Douglas County has one quiet zone, but it includes seven crossings because they're all consecutive. And so, there's quite a few in the state. Arvada and Windsor are currently in construction to add several more crossings. Windsor will have 13 crossings completed the end of this year for quiet zone, and Arvada has four more that they're adding. They already have four crossings in place that are quiet zones. So we ran, generally through Longmont, along this track, we ran a noise evaluation, and it came up with this contour map that actually shows decibel levels. Closest to the track is about 90 decibels, and out, which is the red portion, out to the blue, which is about 65 decibels. And we ran this contour map, and then the city looked at GIS and provided us with a number of residential rooftops within each of these contours, so we could get a feel for how many residences are affected by the train horns at each one of these crossings as a train moves through Longmont. The reason for the grouping, some of the crossings are within a quarter mile of each other. For example, Group 5 is Ninth through Third, and those are all within a quarter mile of each other, so those would need to be treated together because they are so close together. Other groups, the ones at the far north end and far south end, they are more than a quarter mile apart, but they have more of the treatment already in place, so they could realistically be pursued either individually or as a group with lower cost. So that's the reason for the grouping that you see. This really is not meant to really be seen, I realize it's a small font. The reason we wanted to show you this is to identify that we actually looked at all of the viable options within the final rule for each of the crossings, to see which ones geometrically would work, which ones would work in terms of infrastructure. And that's really the reason for this particular slide, is we took a lot of time to look through every one, and when we did the update, we went back and looked again to see if anything had changed to maybe make any other options more viable. And so, within each of those groups, there are some simpler treatments, and there are some higher-cost treatments. And so you'll see a range for each of these groups. I'll take Group 5 as an example. Group 5 is again Ninth Avenue through Third Avenue. And the 858,000 on the low end, although that seems like a low cost, the issue is that some of the things that would need to be done to actually achieve quiet zone at that cost may not be viable options for the community. That in particular would involve closing a couple of streets to cross traffic. So Atwood would stay open, but the cross streets would be closed, and that may not be something that's good for circulation or traffic in the city. The higher end of that range is placing the four quadrant gates, gates on each of the entrance and exit side of each crossing, all the way along that corridor. So that'll give you that 2.6 million number. So each of these slides I'll run through a little more quickly, but they are, each of the groups, we took and looked at what we're recommending for the treatments, the cost of those treatments, the total number of residential units in all of those quiet zone noise contours, and then roughly the cost per residential unit for treatment in that area. So you'll see this one is 66th and 21st, with gates and medians at both crossings. 1,731 residences are affected. Total estimated cost, 672,000, brings us to $388 per residential unit. 17th Avenue is in a group by itself. Actually, we would just need to extend a median. It has the infrastructure in place that it needs. 1,728 residences are affected, a cost of 217,000, so 126 per residential unit. Mountain View is also a crossing that can be done by itself. Again, gates and medians. We try to do that whenever we can, because it really is one of the least expensive and easiest to maintain options. 1,482 residences at a cost of 438,000, $296 per residential unit. Ninth Avenue, this one requires four quadrant gates. 1,205 residences impacted, 672,000, so a cost of 558 per residential unit. So now we get into Group 5, and this is Long's Peak through Third. There are, again, two treatments we looked at that were options. One is four quadrant gates all the way through. The second one, closed Fourth and Sixth Streets with four quadrant gates at the other crossings. And so for those ranges, 1,920 residential units impacted. So for Option A, it's 2.9 million, whereas Option B was 1.9 million. So the range, 1,000 to 1,500 per residential unit, depending on the treatments. Down at Main Street, Kaufman and Terry. Kaufman and Terry were added on as two of those crossings that RTD previously looked at. And so we considered four quadrant gates at Main and also at Kaufman, and to close Terry. And so that ended up 1,000 residential units there, and 1.26 million, so 1,260 per residential unit, getting down into an area where there weren't as many residential houses. The last group is on the South End, Ken Pratt, Sunset, and Hoover. Those were also previously looked at by RTD. Gates and medians at Ken Pratt and Hoover, and then Sunset would need four quadrant gates. So 1,897 residences down there, at a total cost of 715,000, so 377 per residential unit. So generally, overall, looking from 2010 to 2016, what we found was the costs seemed to increase on the order of about 30 percent. For the most part, the railroad costs, the infrastructure costs stayed pretty much the same, except in a couple of cases. The real cost boost was more the roadway elements, contractor elements, flatwork, concrete, those kinds of things seemed to bump up. They went way up, went way back down, and now they're sort of settling out at about 30 percent. You can go ahead and scroll through. So there's a summary of changes I alluded to. For this particular update, we did add some options for Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, which are, we looked at the wayside horns at those three. They didn't end up being very cost-effective, because none of those crossings are active warning crossings now, so we would have to add all of that power and infrastructure there now, so that did add to the base cost. Whereas a normal crossing that had that stuff to begin with, just adding wayside horns is much less expensive. Emory Street was taken out of the update, and then we did add those crossings that RTD previously looked at, looked at west of Main. The best thing that's happened between 2010 and now is that there are a lot of opportunities for funding now. Back in 2010, there really was not a lot of funding available that we could find, particularly at the federal level. And now with the FAST Act, there are quite a variety of grants out there that are available and are very specifically geared toward establishing quiet zones and improving crossings, safety crossing. As you know, Windsor was successful in their pursuit of the Tiger 5 grant, and we have a couple other communities that are chasing Tiger funds. There are also some funds through the FAST Act and through FRA that communities around the country are pursuing specifically for quiet zones. So there's a lot more opportunity now. Local funds, there's still possibilities at the local level. It really just depends on what each individual community can do.
So this is where results from our 2007 Customer Satisfaction Survey. At the time when we asked the question on the survey, 32 percent of the respondents said that it was a major or moderate problem. 22 percent said it was a minor problem, and 46 percent said it was not a problem. This is a question that we anticipate going out in the new Customer Satisfaction Survey. I believe you guys will be seeing that probably sometime in June, as far as the proposed questions for that. The follow-up question to this one was a question to ask about what extent you would support or oppose increasing the current sales tax to fund quiet zones. And you can see on the table there, at the time, there wasn't a lot of support for increasing the sales tax for this. And that's all we had.
I have a question. You know, when you showed that density cloud of, you know, the 95 decibels being the red and 65 way out. First off, I don't think people really understand decibels. You know, the difference between 95 and 65 is 1 one-thousandths of the noise density power. I mean, 30 dB is a lot. But, you know, if you're living right next to those, I mean, 92 to 95 dBs, I think that would just like rock me right out of the bed in the middle of the night. But people, you know, the arguments that I hear from people who live in my neighborhood say, "Well, why should we pay taxes to solve someone else's problem? When they bought their house, they knew that they were buying near a railroad track." But, you know, in 2005, when they did change the rules, the decibels increased considerably. I don't know what the amount was, but I think it was like 15 dB, which is a lot of power increase. So, you know, one of my thoughts is perhaps you could have a, you know, I think a citywide sales tax would fail, just because most people aren't affected. But if you live over there, you're highly affected. Could you make like a special district and have those people in that district possibly vote? I mean, like a lot of these people, I mean, let's say if I lived next to the house, and I could just pay $388, my portion of the residents, to have that thing, and if I was being woken up three or four times a night, hell, I'd be all for it. I'd be all over that. I mean, that's a cup of coffee. I mean, it's nothing if your quality of life and sleep is being deprived. So, I don't know, just kind of my thoughts on a possible solution is to somehow figure out how to make the people that are affected have some possible way to solve this. But I also, I love the fact of, if there's grant money, and you can get a six-to-one match, then I'm all over it. Because I send so much money to the federal government each year, and anytime we can get some of that, just a little bit of that to come back, it's a great thing. So I would support anything that does that. So, anyway, I'll let other people weigh in. Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, I'm all for getting some of the money that's now coming back. For a while, it wasn't there, so this would be a great time to do that. I would like us to think long-range about where we want to be with our railroad in the next 10, 20 years. If you look at the map, the east-west thing, the east-west train, isn't really so much the problem. There aren't that many problems there, except around Main Street. It's the north, the one that goes north, right through the middle of town. That's the one that's the problem. And there is a rail line that goes further east that goes north. So it would seem to me that this would be an opportune time for the railroad to reconsider relocating their traffic further east, and we could take the money that we would be spending to create quiet zones going north where it is, and put it into cooperative thing with them going east. And I would just like for us to try to explore that. Because this used to be meaningful, going up Main, pretty close to Main Street, because of the businesses in Main Street, but they're different businesses now, and it really doesn't belong going through the middle of town anymore.
Councilmember Bagley.
Do you want to respond to that? You had something you wanted to say, and then I'll...
Just real quickly, if I could, a couple of things on that. Councilmember Christensen, you're looking at the Great Western Track that heads around Union Reservoir. That originally was built as part of the sugar factories out in the area. It used to be owned by Omni Trax, and so, you know, those are, I understand the concept of trying to move it east, and I was discussing with Councilmember Christensen during the break. There was an initiative in the state, some of you may remember it, about 10 years ago, to do a major corridor of both utilities and road transportation and rail east of the urbanized corridor along the Front Range, clear out in the area near Morgan County, Weld County, way out there, for the obvious reason of trying to get the heavy freight traffic east, so it isn't impacting all the communities up and down the Front Range. You know, I think that is a desirable goal. On the other hand, I think it's certainly a state, if not a national, level of discussion to pursue that. As much as I'd like to think we could just make that happen, I think the costs are very large to go that route. Doesn't mean we shouldn't think big and look at things, but my guess is in the next 10 to 20 years, we're probably going to have railroads, and we're probably going to have freight trains and traffic coming through the Front Range. Just a guess.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's beginning, I'm just starting to get tired. What is the issue? All three of those, yes. So, I mean, obviously. As far as city funding, wherever we can, and I guess my thoughts are, I think that we should, I mean, how to eat an elephant, one bite at a time. I'd like to see at least the city prioritize where we want to start, and then just start attacking them one at a time. We don't have to do it all at once. But I'd like to see staff come up with a suggestion of whether it should be public improvement, Street Fund, or, I mean, one of those two, rather than the new taxes. I also think that the idea that was mentioned about a district, if, you know, taking it and asking people who, if they really, if it's really that important, I mean, are they willing to pay for it? And then, of course, I think that the only way that we could really attack it aggressively all at once, no holds barred, let's do the tax, let's do whatever we need to do, is if we could get six-to-one, you know, something from the federal government that will allow us to leverage those federal funds. So those are just my thoughts.
If I could weigh in on that, I know one of, you know, staff has obviously been looking at this, and I think we can come forward in your broader CIP discussion. We also want to talk with you about all things transportation, whether it's free buses, or more snow and ice removal, or more of this and more of that. We want to bring that to you in the totality, and in context with each other. That's how you can truly give us direction to prioritize in the context of what everything means. I think that's worthwhile. I absolutely do believe we should be going aggressively after federal, state, any grant we can get. And I think if we can budget to provide staff capacity to get after that, you could probably get a pretty good return on that. I think also seeing what happens with the federal noise rule would be smart. But we ought to, you know, it closes in July. I think we ought to at least remain open to that, to see what comes out of that. And we should watch Loveland. You know, they're the one community that's out there right now trying to get additional Tiger grant money. And stay in communication with all the cities around us. We're all on the same railroad. Fort Collins, Loveland, Longmont, we're all on the same BNSF line. And frankly, it comes through every community similarly. It cuts everybody in half right up the middle, so.
What you just said, I'm all for.
That was very sage advice.
Councilmember Christensen.
I have a question about the Emory Street thing. Aren't we obligated to do that first?
I'm glad you asked that question, Councilmember Christensen. As you'll recall, in the agreement that we have with the 150 Main project, we agreed to split the cost between the city and the developer on that, up to a million dollars. Unfortunately, what we're finding out is the cost of that intersection might even be more than that. And here's the reason why, is that you've got three tracks there. We have to improve all the grade crossings, in addition to putting in all the control features, all the gates, and a new... features, all the gates, and a new traffic light. It's a very, to put it bluntly, it's a very expensive crossing to make quiet and safe. And really, what we're focused on is making it safe when we're going to put several hundred housing units right next to that railroad. And so, it is a very expensive crossing, probably more expensive than most, if not all, the other crossings that we're looking at. I guess the only good news is, is we have a partner on that with us. But I think we are analyzing all those options, and we'll probably be talking with you more before we decide to pull the trigger one way or another on going forward with that.
I think the other thing I wanted to add is, when we bring this back, so, A, this was a touch point to come back and say, we finished the study, here's what the cost estimates are, this is what we're looking at today. Again, sort of a similar thing that I said in the last conversation, there's going to be choices when we look at the other internal funds. We have those funds allocated out to other projects. And so, what it'll mean is we bring these back is we're going to bring back options in terms of what we do and what we don't do. What I can say about the public improvement fund, that's strapped. And that's, and I think that's put in mildly, and that's also the fund that we looked at to handle some of our facility improvements that we talked to you all last budget process about in the condition. So, you know, the conversation is, yes, we were gearing up to do that in the capital improvement, as we gear up to move into the capital improvement plan, but there's going to be choices in this process in terms of, do we do this or do we do this? And do we, you know, maybe it's, we do a little bit of this and a little bit of this, but things will fall out in that conversation just based on what we're projecting and the revenue and the projects that we have in place. So, again, I just wanted to be very transparent and say, this is what it's going to look like as we have those conversations.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Actually, this kind of morphs into our conversation about the waivers. If we don't backfill the street fund and we're pulling money out of it to give waivers to construction, we're less, where are we going to get that money to backfill? So, I think that we should go forward because the FRA is only going to have that tax, what's it called, the FAST Act, for five years. So, that's not a lot of time to plan and go after funds. So, I expect that staff has all of the creativity and knowledge to figure out what kind of grants are actually available, which would depend upon what district would be a tax district. Because if it doesn't match up with what they're going to fund, with what we need. So, I would just say, like to give staff leave to figure this out. Figure it out, Dale. And come back to us, which, what would be a good tax district? What are the grants out there that would fit with that? And then we have to figure out the funding.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Well, it's, the bigger problem for me is waiting for the train at Ken Pratt for thirty minutes. But that doesn't, I don't want to minimize, I don't want to marginalize the impact of the residential areas around the train. When I drive up Atwood Street, I said, who was thinking about this when they built this back in the day? Because one-way streets on either side of the track and residence, your back, you know, your front yard's right up to the train track. So, I feel, I feel for these people that live there, because when I, when I'm at a crossing and the train hits the horn, it like hurts your ears.
Or scares you.
So, when I look at how to address this issue, I think prioritizing is, would be the first thing for, that I would suggest. I don't see that the street fund has the capacity to fund us. I think we have other street projects that are going to be coming up in the next few years, things like Whitingover and those type of things that are going to make that not a real viable option. Special district, that would, that's an interesting one for me. I mean, if you could, if I were living there and I could minimize my exposure to train noise for four hundred bucks or even a thousand, I'd be supporting that. A new tax revenue source, I think it's going to be a tough sell because of the percentage of people totally impacted in Longmont. So, few thoughts of mine, and if the FRA closes the public comment in July, who knows when they're going to do the foral? So, that could be a couple of years, just the way they work, way the federal government works. So, I wouldn't count on that as being a final solution at this point today, but it's something to keep in mind down the road. So, my comments, hope that helps.
I think one thing I would say about the special district that we would need to consider is also the economic demographics of some of the neighborhoods near the railroad, because I think the impact will be different from neighborhood to neighborhood. And as we explore, that is something where I think we'll need to be cognizant of.
Okay. I don't think we have any more questions for you.
Thank you, and I think that does give us good direction. And when we do come back and talk with you about transportation and CIP, we'll have more information on this topic as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, a couple of thoughts. My guess is that, I could be wrong, but I'm guessing that there's nobody in the audience who's here to talk about the land development code update.
We do have consultants here.
No, but what I'm saying is from the public. I noticed the Times call is not here, so we're just going to be having a conversation at ten-twenty in the evening, and we still have to do the judge. So, my question is, how long is this going to be and how hard would it be to kick off to another night?
I saw Joni walking through, let me. Yeah. Can you see, Joni, how long is this going to take? Fifteen to twenty minutes?
Okay. All right, let's go for it.
And the room is empty. As I said. Let's talk about the judge and go.
Okay, we're ready for you.
All right. Hey, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and Brian Schumacher with Planning Development So, we'll be brief. So, with Envision Longmont scheduled for adoption this coming June, we're going to be embarking on an update to the land development code this year. And as part of the update, intend us to implement recommendations from Envision Longmont and other plans as they relate to zoning and land use. One of the examples, as was discussed earlier, is regarding the affordable housing incentives. Another example is updating the zoning to correspond with the future land use plan for Envision Longmont. The overall goal of the project is to update areas of the land development code so that's consistent with current trends, creates opportunities for innovative and quality development, and represents the vision and collective interests and priorities of the community as part of the Envision Longmont process. I think it's also important to note that the land development code should also allow for flexibility in terms of process and standards so that the overall community goals and policies can be achieved efficiently in terms of time and resources for both the applicants and the city. So, Clarion Associates has been hired as consultant to the land development code update, and the update is being kicked off this month. And the project managers from Clarion are here, Matt Goble and Tarek Wafi. And they'd just like to make a few brief presentations to introduce the project, provide an update to the council on the planned approach for the project, and then just check in with council and see if you have any questions or comments about the update. And so, you might be asking, what am I doing here? My role on this project is I'm going to be some of the city project coordinator. And so, I'll be coordinating with Matt and Tarek, as well as other team members from Clarion Associates, as well as city staff and other stakeholders and interested parties throughout the community on this project. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and Tarek. You can talk there if you want.
Turn on the mic. Dustin. All right, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We're excited to be here. We're kicking off a project that's very important to continue the work that you've done with Envision Longmont. So, what we wanted to do tonight is just cover a few brief items. There we go. It'll go pretty quickly, but we wanted to introduce ourselves. You've been working with some of our colleagues at Clarion on the plan, but we have a different specialty, a different background, so. Okay, thanks. So, we'll talk with you just about who we are, the team that will be working on the project. We'll just get a little bit more into the project goals. I think Brian summarized that pretty well, but we'll touch on a few more. We'll go through a few slides that talk about the project approach. This is scheduled to be a twelve-month project, and there's several key milestones that you'll see us at, and so we just want to make sure you understand kind of the sequence of events that we'll be going through. We'll talk about some of the initial feedback, the areas of emphasis that we've already heard about from some of the stakeholders in the community and some of the staff, and then we'll talk about next steps and Q and A. So, pretty brief presentation. Whoops. Just a little bit on background. Clarion is a land use consulting firm. Can't go back. There we go. We're based down in Denver. We do codes all across Colorado and all across the country as well. We have worked on Colorado codes for places in the Front Range, like Northland and Aurora and Littleton. Across Colorado, Glenwood Springs, Carbondale, Pitkin County. So, we have a lot of experience with Colorado codes, but we also work in places as far ranging as Syracuse, New York, and Albuquerque. Those are two of our projects as well. So, we have a good sense of kind of best practices from around the country, and that's, I think, one of the important perspectives that we bring to codes. I've been doing this for about twenty-plus years now. I'm a planner and also an attorney by training, but we're not a law firm, we're a planning firm. Tarek, my colleague, will be with me on the project. You'll be seeing us primarily throughout this project, but we'll be joined by a few other folks. Eric Wenzel is our specialist with illustrations and graphics. One of our goals for the project is to introduce a lot more illustrations of things that you want to see in Longmont. That's the trend with zoning, is not to just have lists of things that you don't want, but to have illustrations and graphics of things that you do want to encourage. Our colleagues Darcy and Don will be contributing as well. Darcy knows Longmont well, she's been the leader for the Envision Longmont project. And then Don is a national leader in fair housing issues and group home issues, things like that, so he'll be helping us to address some of the housing issues, some of which you all talked about tonight. So, project goals, Brian talked about this, but it's worth reiterating. Longmont, Envision Longmont is coming up for adoption pretty soon, and the goal for this project is to go ahead and start to immediately translate the policies of that plan into a strong legally enforceable foundation through a new code. So, that might mean amendments to a lot of different parts of the code. Could be amending the zone districts to match the character areas that are identified in the plan. Could be updating your development standards in your mixed-use district. Could be, could be new mixed-use districts altogether. So, a lot of different ways that that plan could kind of feed into updates to the code. We envision that some of the chapters could be repealed and replaced altogether, and some of them would just be kind of targeted updates with red line edits, but that's a big project goal. Opportunities for innovative and high-quality development. The staff has stressed that to us, that we should kind of feed in our knowledge of best practices to the code update, and then also just consistency with current land use trends. So, at a very high level, the project approach has four tasks that will be spaced out over the course of the year. We are kicking off the project this week with the initiation, talking with stakeholders. We'll come back with a memo that talks about the direction that we propose, then we'll get into the drafting. And we're going to go, actually go into each one of these in more detail, so let me just jump right in. The project initiation involves basically us doing our homework and coming up to speed on Envision Longmont, but also the work that EPS has been doing and all the other kind of plans and work that the city is doing. We know that there's other efforts that might be starting in the next year, like, you know, the St. Vrain project and other projects like that. And so, we'll be just talking with staff and keeping track of all those various policy updates that could potentially have some, you know, input into the code updates. The initial project meetings are primarily with staff. It's working with Joni and with Brian and with Don and your staff to understand existing areas of the code that are working well and areas that could be improved. We've already had very good meetings, kind of going through section by section, and we'll be continuing that over the next few weeks. We're going to be, our public participation strategy really is going to consist of targeted meetings with various stakeholder groups. Because there's so many different types of edits to the code, it's hard to get just one group that could have all the expertise, you know, in housing and environmental issues and development quality. So, we'll be talking with individual groups about discrete issues. We had great meetings with the DDA yesterday about downtown issues and redevelopment. We talked with folks from the sign industry about concerns they had with the current sign code. So, we're going to continue that practice of focused meetings with different stakeholder groups throughout the course of this kickoff phase and the project. I mentioned that we would then turn around the results of our work in an assessment memo. This will be later in the summer, and this is going to basically summarize the results of our analysis. Additional detail about proposed amendments. And this is where we would kind of walk specifically through how we propose to implement the plans by amending the code. So, this could be, for example, a repeal and replace of the zone districts chapter of your current code. And we might lay out in this memo a table that kind of lines up your current zone districts with your, with the character areas in the plan and talks about proposed amendments to the different districts. So, we'll lay all that stuff out at a pretty high level to get the community's feedback on that, and we'll talk very specifically about how they'll fit into the existing code structure. We think it's really important to get that high-level feedback before we jump into the detailed drafting. We'll be looking at a lot of best practices, options, you know, examples from other communities throughout that document. And this is important. For all the work that we do, we'll be doing two drafts. We do first a staff draft where we work with Brian and with Joni and someone from the legal office and maybe some other small core group of staff, just to get initial feedback. Are we on the right track? Have we, you know, gotten everything, the major issues right? And then we'll turn around to a clean draft for public review and discussion. So, we'll do that with all the drafts, starting with the assessment memo. After we get feedback on that, we will jump into the drafting itself. And Tarek.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us up tonight. And I've got the final thirty slides here, so, that's a joke. How do we draft the code? That assessment memo is very important for giving us the rules and the roadmap for what to do when we start drafting the code. And we can't just put all of those together in one draft and then give it to the public and expect it to be well-understood. So, we break it into manageable chunks. The first batch are things that kind of rose to the surface when we read the RFP and after our initial meetings with staff and the stakeholders. The districts and uses really need to be established to implement Envision Longmont. So, that's going to be one of the initial pieces we take a look at. Housing, obviously, spent a lot of time this evening talking about housing. There's more to come. We will include that in the assessment memo and something that will be addressed, at least in part, with this first batch of materials. And then signs as well. We heard a lot about the sign code just being unmanageable, difficult to understand, both in terms of what's allowed and the procedures for getting signs approved. So, we'll be looking at those first. We'll do the staff draft, make minor revisions, and put that public draft out for review. You will see those public drafts, and we encourage you to read those and give your comments as you're going through those batches. Then we'll jump into the final batch, the second, development and subdivision standards. How good does development have to be? How much landscaping is the right amount of landscaping? How much parking should be required or should not be required? And then the general provisions. How is the code enforced? And some of the review procedures for making this code work for the city of Longmont. So, again, that would be a staff draft and then a public draft. When we've received comments on both of those... When we've received comments on both of those batches, then we seen them together into a consolidated draft that we would take through the adoption process. And the reason we do that, if we kept making revisions to that first batch of materials, it becomes very difficult to get to the second batch and to get the project done in a reasonable timeframe. So this has worked very well in other communities, and we think it will work well here, too. So, we have drafted the code and then bring it through the adoption process. One thing that we like to do is just include an executive summary. It really highlights every, all of the commentary that we included in those first drafts to say, what are the big changes from your current code to what you've seen in this consolidated draft? It highlights the top 10 issues that were covered. It will talk about your major changes to landscaping or to parking. It will talk about all of the things that might be important to the development community and to the neighborhoods as well. And then we will show up at the hearings to answer questions and present the materials. Any additional comments that are received on that consolidated draft, we will go back to the office and make the appropriate changes to the code and produce that final version of Longmont code updates. I should mention that there's a really good foundation in your current code now. We do not expect a large amount of reorganizing of the information. We think the table of contents is generally good, and we're going to try to stay within the current format. To the extent we can do red lines versus those wholesale changes repeal and replace, we'll just have to play that by ear as we get into the drafting. And then the final thing that we will do is leave you with some training and technical assistance materials, so that we haven't dropped a new code without explaining to the public and to staff, here's how you would actually use the code. So what have we learned so far? We're on day two of the project, but we've already learned quite a bit, so wanted to share what we've heard from the stakeholder meeting so far. One is that it's really important that these zoning districts line up with the future land use categories that are laid out in Envision Longmont. The second thing is that mixed use is not one size fits all. Right now, you have a mixed-use district. It has not been tested, albeit two projects in the city, and we think that having one mixed-use district might not be the answer for a city of this size with so many different parts. There's not really one Longmont. You have centers and corridors. You still have some greenfield areas. So we're going to be looking at that as part of the assessment memo. The use regulation should be updated and simplified. Right now, you just have a lot of details in the use matrix. What can I do with my property and where can I do it? Some of the more modern codes tend to shrink those tables down and then include a lot of the detailed information from that table in a supplement that follows that table. So we're going to be looking at that. There are new trends out there, short-term rentals, other uses that just might not be well-adressed in your current regulations. We'll be looking at all of those, and again, will be part of the analysis in the memo that you'll see. And finally, the sign code, it's not working so well, so we should get right to it. That was one thing that was loud and clear over the past two days. So what will we do now? We have drafted an online questionnaire. We would love if all of you take that questionnaire, once we get that up on the city's website. I would expect in the next week or so that that would be available. But this is just another way. If we can't meet with everybody in person, we can't talk to everybody on the phone, you can take it at your own pace and give us the feedback that we need. We will be following up with individuals that we need to talk to, just to get more definitive feedback and direction on certain pieces of the code. And then the assessment memo, we expect that would be available for public review later this summer. So be on the lookout for that. And again, we are just thrilled to be working here. We love Colorado, and it's great to be able to drive up and talk to you all as often as possible. So we'll open it up for any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Don't mistake our silence for lack of interest or lack of appreciation. I've been up since about 4:00. It's been a long day, but the, thank you, good work. We look forward to the next reiteration as you guys get going. So thank you.
You know, I think one thing that we probably should look, I've always thought our sign codes were really hard and complicated, but in terms of like the required amount of landscaping around development and stuff, I think the world is changing. I think, you know, because water is a scarce commodity, I mean, we need to give more flexibility to, you know, landscape with native Colorado plants, zero scape, all kinds of other options that can, you know, reduce costs of HOAs and maybe even prevent us from having to build, you know, another water purification plant. I mean, if everybody could get down to using 40 gallons a day instead of 240 gallons a day, that would change the, what we have to spend money for. But anyway, thank you, and I know you're going to do a good job, and I think this is something that is going to benefit the city, and I'm glad it's all tied in with Envision Longmont and all working together, so thank you.
Great.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for staying up here so late.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. So. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the city council rule, a procedure 25. B, to allow council to take final or official action regarding the municipal judge.
All right. That's, motion's been made, and it's been seconded by Councilmember Bagley. Let's vote on that. And that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it's, as the seven of us have seen, we had some good response to the position of municipal judge, some really good candidates. I'd like to thank Judge Muldo...Muldahill, Anton Dwork, and Dan Benavides for being on the, on that committee to make recommendations to us, and everyone else. Joanne, thank you. Great candidates, just very difficult decision, but I'd like to move to direct staff to offer Robert Frick the position of Longmont Municipal Judge and negotiate an employment offer.
All right. A motion's been made to offer, to begin the negotiation with Robert J. Frick, and it's been seconded. You know, I guess I'd like to weigh in here before we vote. It was really, really hard because we had three qualified candidates, and there wasn't a whole lot of separation, and, boy, it was just, it was one of the hardest decisions. It's easy to make a decision when you have a clear best, but when it comes down to, close to a, I don't know, gut feel, I really, I really liked Sanita Samara, and I really appreciated the fact that she came, and I appreciated her passion. I also thought Robert Frick was an excellent candidate. But I think, I think we've all discussed this, spent a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure out what the best choice is, because this is something for the long term. I, too, would like to thank the members of the community that served on that task force to bring us three excellent candidates. I think they all did a great job, and, but I think at this point, we're ready to make a decision, and so we've got a vote. It's been seconded. Unless anybody else wants to weigh in here, let's vote. And it passes six to one with Councilmember Christian descending. Okay, so the city's got its direction. Councilmember, oh, I guess I'll make a motion to reinstate the city council rules of procedures. Okay, let's vote on that. All right. That passes seven to zero. So now we're back into our regular study session, and now it's time for mayor and council Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Tomorrow at 1:00 is the Peace Officer Memorial at the steps of the Safety and Justice Center at 1:00. This is to remember those officers that have had end of watch during their, during their duties. It's something that is very near and dear to my heart, considering my past, but just a, I would encourage those that can attend to attend. Also, the Saturday at, let me pull this up here, the Saturday at the Brew Market at 9:00, has coffee with council, myself and Councilmember Peck will be there from 9:00 to 10:00. And at 10:00, I will just go ahead and say, I have to leave to be dad, so I'll be leaving right at 10:00. So I would encourage those residents that like to come out and talk to two members of council, please come on in.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Because of the presentations that we've had tonight and our discussion about how much money is leaving the city, I would like to have a study session about revenue sources for this city. We have $57 million that we have to come up with for flood recovery, thousands of dollars that we have to invest in the four buildings that we've had mortgaged, just to get them up to par. Quiet zones, COP, approximately $1.5 million. We have to figure that out for 2017. A half a million for affordable housing. We want an Olympic pool, that is $32 million to, just to get, not without operating costs. And if we want to buy that fairback box for RTD, that's going to be about $68,000. So I would like to have a discussion and bring forth, basically, an idea that I had talked to our city manager about, a revenue source for the city that does not involve retail sales tax or property tax. So would that be possible to do that? I'll make a motion. I move that we have a study session to discuss revenue sources for the city that are outside of what we have now.
Okay, that's been, motion's been made and moved to second. But don't we do that during our budgeting process as part of normal operating procedures? Is this something?
We'll go over all the revenue sources in the budgeting process. I think what I hear Councilmember Peck saying is that there's a specific item that you would like to discuss.
There is. At a, outside of the budgeting session, which tells of the re, the revenue sources that we already have implemented. Is that correct?
Pardon?
The budgeting session that we hold, does that not tell us the revenue sources that we already have in place?
So we go over that. We can also look at additional revenue sources in the budgeting process. We look at our financial policies in the budgeting process. In terms of additional revenue sources, I think if you're, so, if I'm thinking what we need to discuss, I think it's an additional sales tax revenue opportunity, which it's not, it's not an additional revenue source, it's something that can contribute to the existing revenue sources.
Okay, so we don't need a special?
No, we talk about that in, just in the normal budgeting process.
Okay. I didn't understand that. Thank you. So I remove my.
Unless, unless council wants to talk about a specific project, and then, so for example, one of the things that council gave us direction on when we talked about the swimming pool was direction to talk about the feasibility study of a new swimming pool.
Okay. So I would like to amend my motion. All right. I would like to have an opportunity, whether it's in a study session, to talk about the possibility of having an equestrian center in Longmont on a national competition level. That's my motion.
Okay. There's been a motion. It's been seconded.
I guess the, I got questions.
But, questions?
Conversation. It's a motion to second. There's a lot of discussion?
Yeah. Well, someone's got to turn off their mic before other people are, okay. Councilmember Moore?
Well, without knowing enough about it, I can't see having an equestrian center generate that much revenue from what I know right now. Do you have, I mean, is there any, how is that any different than like a swimming pool or something that would generate revenue?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Have you talked to Prab about this, Parks and Rec Advisory Board? Has this gone through them?
No.
Okay. I can't support this without a little bit more information about, we're asking to get a feasibility about how much it would cost to do an equestrian center when we have no information about anything, or how this was brought forth, or gone through boards and commissions that it needs to go through. I think it's a little premature.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Ironically, I've been looking at horse property lately. The, the, there's a, I mean, there's a 200, there's a premier equestrian facility, 235 acres, $12 million that's for sale up in Lyons. There's another one on 287, about two miles north of Highway 66. They're asking about 988 grand for it. I guess my concern would be, I'd be willing to talk about it, but I guess, I guess I would, just like the mall or whatever, someone comes to us and says, hey, I'd like to bring an equestrian facility here, rather than the city actually being the one to actually implement it. So I'm not opposed to it, but I'd only want to talk about it if there was somebody who actually wanted. Is there somebody who wants to build one?
Councilmember Peck?
About, about 12 years ago, this was brought up to council at the time from, basically, the communities who are really into the horse, whole horsing, whether it's just, do you remember that, Councilman Santos? Okay. Whether it was dressage or on a competitive level. And I did talk to our city manager about this and asked him about the feasibility of doing something like this, and he, Harold, had said that he, he actually has done this, built one, an equestrian center.
So if I can jump in, I think.
Please.
I actually have experience in this. In the last community I worked in, they had a coliseum, and in conjunction with a rodeo association, they built, through a half-cent sales tax program, they built an equestrian facility, updated the fairgrounds. It was part of a broader project, and they attracted groups like the American Horsemen Association that came in, and that was funded as part of the half-cent sales tax, and we did an ROI basically on the events that they had. So a lot of work went into it, but yeah, I do have experience in it. It is, it's a process. What I can say for the community, in conjunction with the fair, the rodeo, there was a significant amount of sales tax generated at that facility. That's my experience doing that. And that included show barns and everything else, and, you know, it needs, you know, what I could say is it needs to be an indoor facility, you can adjust the soils and make it different because they have requirements like certain textures of soils for certain events and things like that, so.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I do remember this, it was a little bit, less than 12 years ago. If I remember correctly, those folks wanted us to give them property. This was when I first got on council. And council wasn't, I mean, they wanted it, I believe it was over off of 66, or north of 66, between 287 and Hoover, I believe. But, there was apparently some groups that were just upset because they didn't, they were, they thought they were being treated unfairly somewhere else. Without, it's...
Without, it's, again, I think it's a, without, I think Councilmember Bagley had it right. Usually somebody comes to us and say, hey, we would like to build the facility or something of that nature. Grateful that you have experience in that, in case someone were to ever come. There's not, there's not a whole lot that's not in your wheelhouse, Harold, and I appreciate that. But this is just a little, I think, again, premature.
Well, you know, if there's a public-private partnership, that's a beneficial win-win, which, you know, at that point, I'd be very much on board with anything that generates revenue and provides, brings people to Longmont. I mean, horse people do have a lot of money. I mean, if you could afford to board horses at $750 a month, you can spend a lot of money in the city. And those people, people that I know are horse money, have a lot of money. And so I'm not against it, you know, pursuing that. I don't necessarily think it's something we need to answer tonight at 11:00 at night when we're all tired. But, Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My mom always used to say, timing is everything. If you ask me, do you want a pool tonight? I'm like, no. No, I don't. But the, so I guess, I guess I'm going to vote against it for now, not because I don't want to talk about it, but if someone came forward with a plan, I'd be willing to consider it. I just don't want to be involved as the group that actually tries to create the business plan for it, if that makes sense. If somebody brings a business plan to me, I'll read it. I just don't want to be part of, or ask staff to create it right now, given all the things that we've got going on in the city.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. And it fails two to five with Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember, Mayor Dennis Coombs, and Councilmember Santos, and Councilmember Finley descending. All right.
Gladly be visited.
Yeah. And a good idea. I guess a few things, you know, besides what Councilmember Santos mentioned, the 1:00 ceremony at the Justice Center tomorrow. We have a 10:00 ribbon cutting, a groundbreaking for UC Health is also tomorrow. Then we've got the bridge ribbon cutting also this week, Thursday, so people can come out to that. I'd also like to acknowledge the 4x100 team for Longmont High School. I think they set a new stadium record, new record. These are the same 4x100 people that have been running since like sixth grade together. And I think they ran like 41 points, something, a few seconds, you know, smashing all kinds of records. I think, believe it was Logan Goodner, Cotton Lindberger, Eli Sullivan, and I believe it was David Spidey. But kudos to, and it was the same team that won the state record last year, but they've smashed their record now, so they're, they're hot. So congratulations to four boys that know how to work together and work as a team unit, and something so incredible as all seniors. I think that's really cool. I also want to point out to people, people don't really understand what Windy Gap project is. What we're really doing is we're buying a bucket to store the water that we've already previously purchased, you know, those water rights. So it's not we're buying water, but we're buying the bucket to put the water in is what Windy Gap really is. So just wanted to clarify for that, people get confused about thinking that we're buying water rights, but we're really buying the bucket to put the water that we've already purchased. So anyway, Councilmember Christensen?
I want to thank all the people who participated at Cinco de Mayo. It was fun, even though it was a grim day. But for those of us who showed up, it was a lot of fun. And I want to thank the Barbershop Harmony Society for serenading me, even though my name is not Mary Lou. And they have a concert coming up, so check out the Barbershop Harmony Society.
All right, I guess that ends city council comments. So city manager, any comment?
No comments, mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.